We're good. Okay, it is 6:00 PM. The City Council meeting of July 2nd to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dar.
Present.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Bass.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Hill. And Councilmember Thomas.
Here. Thank you. All right, it is time for the optional Pledge of Allegiance or Moment of Silence. You please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, indivisible, literate and just.
Thank you. This, we don't usually have this many people in City Hall, and I'm really so excited to see you all. Just so you know, there's candy in the basket on the table back there. It's up for grabs. Please help yourself. Okay, it is time for approval of the agenda. This is the best looking agenda we have had in months, and I would gratefully enter to.
Best move to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, time for public comments for items not on the agenda. If there's anyone in City Hall who would like to give public comment, please raise your hand. I'll call on you. Come forward, give me your name, your address, and you will have three minutes. James, you're up.
I'm Jane Harrelson, and my address is 172 Rapid. I'm here on behalf of the T D Swims. Couple summers ago, this couple got by a hot dog stand, and the lady stopped at the T D Swims information wishing pool. I walked over and I said, oh, if you want to make a wish. She said, no, I want to make a donation. We lost our daughter. She drowned. So through my tears, I said, what's your daughter's name? And she said, Rebecca. We, this community, we're raising a generation who will never learn how to swim. Many of them will be afraid of the water for the rest of their life. The quickest, most cost-effective way to get an affordable public pool open is renovate what we have. The school district is more than likely going to vacate Lake County Intermediate School and sell it. Well, if they sell it to a private entity, we might as well get out of the pool for a good decade or so. So I ask you all to keep this in mind. Let's work together. Sir, I want this big rec center with an aquatic center, 50-meter pool slash at Lacy River. It's not going to happen for a good 10 to 15 years, though. So let's please work with what we got. Thank you, and thank you for serving.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, anyone else in the public who would like to give public comment for items not on the agenda? Yes, sir, please come up.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Scott Ossola. I'm a resident of Colorado. I used to live in Iran. Retired. I volunteer for United Sovereign Americans and as spokesperson. Today, I hope to you as concerned citizens sharing alarming information about our state's voter database. We covered two thousands of hours of research conducted by our highly qualified and credentialed data team. While the numbers are staggering and somewhat difficult to comprehend, one thing is clear, they don't add up. Just like your checkbook was balanced, so was our votes. If you had $10,000 fewer dollars in your bank account than you had deposited, you would certainly want to know what happened, and if a company has that significant discrepancy in its books, the company would most certainly conduct an audit. In fact, purely audits are required by law. Audit of the 2022 election using only data, official data from the state secretary of website shows the 2022 election may not have been accurate or legally compliant. We are not saying that one candidate won over another or that any election should be overturned. That's the state's official data from the certified election shows that the votes, as counted, were not all valid and accurate under the law. Tonight, we will present to you a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply constitutional and statutory in Colorado. We are happy to meet with you and go over this information, including more details about the specific finding. If you have any questions that I cannot answer tonight or now, I will commit to getting to you the answer in writing for the United Sovereign American Executive Team as soon as possible. This data and our request for investigation has been shared with the state electoral officials and law enforcement, including the FBI, DOJ, CIA, the Department of Homeland Security, and the Colorado State Patrol Special Investigations. It is essential that we, the state and the people of this state, make it clear to our representative that these issues must be taken seriously. I thank you tonight. Our three next couple speakers will read the resolution in multiple parts, and our final speaker will conclude this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Could you tell us your address, please?
Yes, it's 9362 Lower G Street.
And you're here representing United Sovereign?
United Sovereign America.
Thank you.
You're very.
I'm going to get my notes. Are there any other public comments? Yes, Patty.
I'm Patty Nagel from Lake County. My address is 1422 County Medical Center.
Oh, sorry, that was frickin', let me start you over. Take up.
Okay. Whereas it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. But, and the right of suffrage can be denied by debasement or dilution of the weight of a citizen's vote just as effectively as by fully prohibiting the free exercise of the branchage. End quote, Reynolds v. Sims, 1964. Whereas it is the duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Quote, Congress seeks to guard the election of members of Congress against any possible unfairness by compelling everyone concerned in holding the election to strict and scrupulous observance of every duty devolved on him whilst engaged. The evil intent consists in disobedience to the law. End quote, in Requiem, 1888. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenets of an election are upheld. Number one, the voter rolls must be accurate. National voter registration Act, 1993. Number two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. U.S. Constitution, 14th Amendment, Section 2. Number three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Number four, there can be no more than one in 125,000 ballots to merit the voting system, Oh, America Vote Act, 2002. Whereas, an open source of the audit of the Colorado 2022 general election conducted by Colorado state citizens has uncovered evidence of massive inaccuracies that violate the federal state laws, including 1,468,211 ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the Colorado state voter roll database, 100,938 votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrants, 34,912 more votes counted than voters who voted in the 2022 general election. No one knows who cast them. 100,917 apparent voting violations in excess of legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Excuse me. The maximum allowable system errors for the 2022 general election in Colorado was 21. That number again was 100,917. Certification as defined by law and attestation of accuracy and compliance appears to have been.
Is it? Oh, great. That's it?
That's all.
Your timing was perfect.
Good.
Thank you, Patty. Is there any other public comment, sir?
Yeah. How's everybody?
Well.
Here's time here, so leave this real quick.
You give us your name and your address? You'll have three minutes, but I need to know your name and your address, please.
Michael Rumer, this is 1600 Mount Evans. Board of directors, let me come in. Okay, leaving no extra.
You're, you're good.
Whereas the intent of voters must be known fractionally before certification can be lawfully conducted. Certification of an election that bears from law is infringement of the civil rights of the, of the citizens, a fraud. United City versus Brock Morton in 1878. From the time of immorality election to public office have been in a point substance, no more, no less than the expression of qualified electors of the choice of candidate. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and insurance of domestic stability by joining, demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing law and equitable principles. One, proof of citizenship, identity and eligibility to register and vote, not anonymous, but yes. Two, voter rolls certified accurate and available for public review at the challenge 30 days before the start of an early vote. Voters' ballot, they must be, bring proof of citizenship, identity and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. To be, and one, secure ballots similar to act. Similar to current systems. Where imaging technology is used for verification, the security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Or the last systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law prevention regarding risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. So basically, it's just proof of citizenship. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Ramon. Are there any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Mara. My address is 1600 Mount Evans, Nevada. And I would start off with adjudication, but beside all pre-candidate and trained citizen witnesses being given full and effective observation right. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images and CBRs. And resource, election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including audibility and witness transfer paper records. A NIST complaint randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a 95% confidence level. All elections pursuant to the 14th Amendment. Section 2 must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified insured and bonded security, forensics or financial auditors, not personnel from within the election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, CBRs, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including laws. If the total of one unique variances above is more than 10% of the margin of victory, the new election must be held in the state for those candidates affected. Unless the issues can be provably corrected by manual handed count and a vote review of records. waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration, registration through certification can guarantee the intent, intent of the people is accurately reviewed.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ramon. Are there any other public comments? Yes? Laura?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Laura Main. I live in Lake County at 1844 Seasons Boulevard. Been a resident of Colorado for 57 years. I'm also a bond here and not an official spokesperson with United Sovereign America. You just heard a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 election from registration through certification. In it, you heard us ask for meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election for all. In fact, the resolution cited many U.S. Supreme Court precedents that support the need for such. Laws are being ignored. Bottom line, the checkbook is not balancing. We need certainty. The voting system, which controls our most vitally important right, the right to choose our representatives, is not producing an accurate, trustworthy result. Do you think that these anomalies within our election system, a system which is part of our national security infrastructure, should continue to be ignored? How much is it costing us not to fix the problem? How much is it costing our GDP, our military, our foreign policy, our health? The self-esteem of our children and young people? And how much is it costing our dignity to keep fighting each other? The cost is a measure, so I urge you to show your agreement by passing the resolution. Our website showcasing our initiatives nationwide has some extremely informative videos that explain the anomalies and apparent violations of law here in Colorado, as well as in other states. The website is UniteForFreedom.com. That's unite, the number four, freedom.com. I urge you to check it out and learn more about our organization. One more time, that's unite, the number four. Thank you very much for your time, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Steve Presda. I live at 131 East Third Street. I'm actually a resident of Glenville. For approximately 45 years, six of those years, I maintained residence here in Boulder, to you. My experience running for office, the last time I ran for office, City Council, was extremely negative. First, I had been on City Council, I got elected to the county, the election official, the, our elected, our election official relied on petition. This individual is a PhD. The person at the county. Prior to the election, I had argued, I'm trying to say it right, about there were only two positions, a city official position as a member, as a city council member, and then that's a county clerk to this conflict of interest. Anyway, getting to the part of the, see that, I'm trying to present here quickly, I need to write up more carefully. And then, I'm not prepared at this time to talk about it. On hand. I feel I was potentially provoked to create a scene at City Council, at the City Hall over being refused to allow to add extra signatures to my petition to replace the signatures that are not valid. So I think there should be a component about. And also, Councilmember Joey Edwards received the benefit from this elected official. She wrote a letter to City Council, to the peril Democrat praising his abilities. I think that was a gross unethical act, no matter how we parse the law, maybe parse the law, well, that's okay. But it wasn't a private thing, I think that influenced the election also. So I think monitoring and educating the people that take care of these elections, these also be done. And I firmly believe that this was a purposeful act to not based on interest, to having made a scene at City Hall. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Steve. Other public comments for items not on the agenda? I'm sorry, I can't see around. Okay, just making sure. Are there any comments from our online? Patty, how can you be online and here?
Easy, Maya.
There any comments from our online attendance? Please, like, raise your hand or unmute yourself? Okay, seeing none. Last call, second, just making sure I haven't missed anyone. Okay, thank you very much all for your comments. We're going to move on to presentations and discussions. First up, we have a city administrator's report.
Good evening, everybody. So a couple things to talk about. We have a discussion on our agenda tonight regarding the the sales tax task board. And we all attended, the mayor and I and Councilmember Bass attended, the county's commission meeting today regarding that. And Councilmember Bass, are you going to report on the outcome of that? Would you like to report on the outcome of that right now?
I mean, I'm just going to, yeah, I mean, it's a one sentence on the slide, but yes.
Okay. I've learned from our finance director that I shouldn't steal anyone's thunder.
Yeah.
I got, so I'll just key that for you. The other thing I'm going to tease for you is in our department reports, we have some excellent news from the police department. They rewarded some grants. So Agent Chief Daly is going to be able to join us after 7:00 PM tonight. He is on call, but if he is not able to join, I do have his bullet point, but I wanted to tease it. They've got some great news coming from there. A couple of the things to just kind of tee up for everyone, the mayor and I talked about potentially the need to update the City Council violence. So it is something that I wanted to throw out there for you all to sort of thinking about. They haven't been updated for a while. I'm realizing that perhaps they need some tweaking and some updating. So that perhaps that's, you know, happens part of the.
It's the best part of the. You should leave Maya for the civic experience. Sorry to interrupt.
I will leave.
Did someone leave their material in the back? I was just sorry. Oh, she's coming back. So.
Why else? Consider updating the violence.
Yes, updating violence. So that's probably something that we will be making, right? That this will be a period of planning process. Important, the discussion regarding the potential sale tax on the city side. We had, the mayor and I talked about this, and just to throw that out there, depending on how our discussion goes, just we talked about having work session dates for that purpose, for the sales tax purpose on the line 9th and 23. So just keep those dates in mind. I wanted to throw that out now because I can might forget in our later discussion, but if we need those days, those are the days that we were talking about. A couple of the things that came out of the Board of County Commissioners meeting this afternoon is that there was an update on the Community Justice Center, in terms of the path for that. Wanted to report that the, the paths forward do not, they do not include the Monroe site. And so you all remember back in the initial discussion about this, the City Council passed a resolution committing, making a financial commitment. If the county secured a certificate of participation, we would contribute $5 million towards that project with certain limitations. And so I think the best thing to do is for me to have some discussions with the county on their other paths forward. And we all agree it's probably best to have that resolution still hanging out there. We should either figure out if it's something that needs to be revoked or if it's something that potentially will be revised, but I didn't want to forget that. But I did want to report that the Monroe Street or Monroe campus is, is not under construction. A couple of last things, unfortunate news, but with somewhat okay outcome at the moment is unfortunately, the Glenville Main Street flower box planters were vandalized just recently over the weekend and mostly on the west side near the Silver Dollar. And that's the unfortunate news. The fortunate news is there is some video footage of potentially who the people were that didn't. So that's the thing that we are pursuing. The better news is that most of the flowers were able to be salvaged. It's not understanding to say that these flowers cost quite a bit of money and take a lot of planning in advance. So if you think most people are probably trying to buy their flowers now, replacing flowers right now is not easy. And we've been through this for various reasons with the planter box program. But I did reach out to the Main Street Directors, Amy and Aaron, and said, do you need the city to contribute additional money to the program? Obviously, it's very beneficial to the city. And they said, not if we, you think we, you know, they put all the plans that they could find back to the planters, and you enough areas to fish some out of the trash. So they said, you know what, we're, we're okay for now. So it's an unfortunate thing. I'm disappointed. I don't know who vandalizes flowers. But it has a better outcome than it had on going to update you all on that. And then I would say some of the good news for the end. I wanted to welcome back our animal shelter manager, Ellen Cusco. I wanted to pass along some great news is that she attended a shelter manager course from September of 2023 through May of 2024. And this is something that she and I talked about, and that was an excellent opportunity for her. It covered five different modules, including leadership, shelter operations, community programs, animal health and clinic operations, and marketing and settlement. So the five courses were six weeks long, so 34 weeks of coursework. She completed it even though she was out. So it was about 300 hours of coursework, and she just recently received her graduation certificate. So I wanted, I asked her if she wanted to cover that in her department report, and she said she doesn't like talking about herself. So I feel I was really happy to talk about her. So I'm super proud of her. I'm surprised that she was able to leave that program even though she has some of the things going on in her life. And with that, I'm going to save the rest, the information of this I have, I think, for potentially our sales tax discussion later. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the city administrator? Okay, thank you. Let's move on then to presentation by Full Circle.
Good evening. So Amy Dahlia O'Dea, and I am current CEO of Full Circle. Full Circle, we envision an inclusive community where we can balance. And I'm just here kind of doing the introduction. Put together. Hello, everyone. Jennifer Young, I'm the CFO of Full Circle. Thanks for having us this evening. We're here today to present about the urgent need we answer this year working with the Lake County Housing Fund. We are pressing that the city consider implementing a similar funding initiative to provide our community with continued and much needed support for housing. The demanding witness clearly shows the fact recent stable support is essential to the basic needs of our community. Our vision is the ambition of an inclusive community where we can balance. and you can go through this line. And our mission is to build a global economy in the fourth community through its development. Families support, services, and resource connection. And the housing fund connects there to be able to support the resource connection. So to start off with, maybe that. Then also, thank you, Steve.
Everybody, my name is Steve Smith, and I and our family resource center, we provide family little resource connections, family role planning, and all the financial systems such as rental, mortgage assistance. This data is from January, the quarter, until now. Dollar amounts are rounded. They're rounded in property taxes that they all pay, except for three hundred dollars, and then rental and mortgage. That's what we, we have two provisions. We were able to impact five hundred and ninety-seven total people to that place. Everybody living in that house. And then it was two hundred and two U.D. And then the total money that the house, two hundred is moving on. It's a hundred and fifty. The twenty twenty seven county has seven thousand four hundred and thirty. We have lost two thousand six hundred and thirty-three. As you can see, where we were able to, about eight percent of the county is top class that was on for a lower continuation. The ability to ensure that they and that that is about seven percent of Lake County has two days of work. The city will support three percent of the families. We have three hundred and thirty-seven applications, and we were able to finalize two hundred applications, and we had twenty-eight outstanding applications. So property tax, ten percent, and then we still have fifty-three that's available. We're gonna have a couple of the people that that's doing the thousand support. And then I, and the next, yeah, this, we gives me data about what numbers the resource center has helped. We have parenting classes and a basic income guarantee program, income, and it's working well. To identify individuals with children. And in in the fiscal year of twenty-two twenty-three, we had the new resource connections and the helping through positions. So we were able to do a few resource connections. And then this last fiscal year, just ended the rounds, we did three hundred and seventy resource connections. We had thirty participants for twenty-three twenty-four, and the total amount that we were able to do was five. And then we also have a diaper program. The diapers, if monthly, we took about fifty, fifty children, and we were able to provide ninety-two thousand four hundred and fifty. And six three paths, always, we're not so two hundred and two. And then our family role planning eight-five participants participated this, put in the front of the board. I don't know, I don't know if there are questions and comments that you guys might have.
And I'll jump in, and just in conclusion, we're here to request, in front of you. So a little bit of history, Bed County reached out when they had their request proposals from their funding streams. We applied for rental assistance to them, and then the conversation started happening around the BSCC really wanting to know how can we assist with the property taxes they had increased so much. And so there, actually, we got a lot more than we had requested, and that expanded to help with property taxes, mortgage assistance, or rentals. So the city has some structure, we have the data able to take that.
I think before I say, ask if anybody has questions for Full Circle. Christian, would you like to give a little background about like where this came from?
Let me get some context. So in the beginning of this year, and a little bit later of last year, we started having this discussion in this council. Was there about property tax and kind of how we're gonna manage that budget? You know, slowly but surely, we came to the realization that's really hard outcome to really have in that moment, given that we didn't really know where our fund was going to land. So, you know, I had thought of the idea that we initially included in the budget some type of assistance for this going to Full Circle since they had approved a program at the time through Climate Needs Committee, which had helped with rental assistance and early on with utilities as well. So with that idea in mind, and with that proposal in mind, we decided that it's best to hold off and wait until we actually have a better idea of what the numbers look like. I believe we do have an update on what those numbers look like, and specifically the property tax numbers compared to our budget. So we'll have a deeper discussion here soon. But the idea was, let's wait until we have those numbers. We can see about estimated what we're gonna end up by the end of the year, and if we have enough funds to potentially help, you know, fund this very necessary program. The idea of it is to help provide some type of relief, not only through property tax, but we can also through any other housing-centric struggles that our community might be facing. So that is where the proposal came from, where it originated, and kind of why the ask is today rather than the property being.
And at this time, other questions for Full Circle about this program or what Christian spoke to?
Can you tell us what, what is the funding number for the county, and what is your ask? What's, what are you asking for from the city?
Yeah, the county originally asked for fifty thousand. And then after conversations, we got an additional three hundred thousand. I think anywhere by between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand, I suppose.
Questions?
Christian, do you recall, like, what was the source of the county's funding? Was it federal funds that got passed through, or was it from County General Fund?
And I turned to the county commissioner.
So, okay, so it was federal funding from American Recovery Act that I got passed through to Kevin?
So that funding is not ongoing?
Well, the funding, the source of the funding is, no, we haven't. You were having here.
And, and I would just like to echo a little bit of what Christian said because we, going into this year, the estimates for property taxes were first wildly inflated. And then we had the decision, like, do we reduce the city's mill levy? Do we, like, how, how do we, how do we make the impact less on people in Leadville? We got a lot of legal advice saying, hold the phone, there's all this stuff up in the air through the state legislation that may affect this. Then we got further advice from the assessor going, hold the phone, those estimates are wildly inflated. And so over the course of this year, we've kind of been like, oh, my gosh, are we even gonna make our, our budget for property tax revenue? Typically, every year, we sort of kind of give a blind, or not blind, but we, we kind of anticipate like a thirteen percent or somewhere in the teens growth for our property tax revenue. It looks like at this point, and Crystal's not here, we're still Crystal is here. Crystal, can you speak to our, our current property tax revenue? I believe there was another anticipated, anticipated payment coming through this month.
And I can just say, she
Yeah, I don't know, she's still on mute.
We did have some internal discussions about this, and you know, property taxes, you know, will definitely assess how you change. And so our property tax has been hovering somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars. And our budget of, you know, five to six million dollars isn't, isn't a ton of our budget. We're thinking about maybe we're spending this city's budget, the rest is sales tax. And I'm fine.
Hi, Mayor, it's Crystal. I didn't anticipate speaking, I was just trying to make dinner. We have not received the, the payment yet from the treasure. That usually comes towards the middle of the month. I think they usually take the first, about the first ten days of the month to close the prior month's books. So that should be forthcoming in the next week or two. You know, and it's really hard to say, we could, we could go based off what we received in February and double it, but we really don't know, like, how many of those were paying fulls or if they were making the first payment. But yeah, I, I anticipate maybe another two hundred thousand, but I'm not positive on that.
And I think our internal discussions were generally along the lines that we had discussed. If we do have additional substantial property tax revenues of our budget, intention is we would like it to go towards assisting, you know, people in our community who are very urban. And councilor, the layout suggestion was, I think, well-received amongst the council that we're not in a position to manage program ourselves. Full Circle has been to program. And so I think we had scheduled you to come about this time of year because we thought we would be getting the information and to have you all present about what we do to tee it up so that when we get the information and the numbers, we know where we are.
Definitely. So we should, I would hope, within the next month, have an idea of if we make our budget, if we exceed the property tax revenue that we've budgeted for what we may be able to offer. My question is, do you have the capacity to, to take said funding and apply it to Leadville city residents, since it's coming from the Leadville city property tax revenue?
I mean, it's definitely, it might take some prepping for that as far as I'm sure we would have to look at. You were just talking about this today, it's specifically for, when you got the county money, it was everybody, there's very little restrictions on that. Really wanted everybody to have access to it. And we talked about, hey, what does that look like? Do we need to verify addresses, how to verify addresses? So we definitely internally would have to figure out the system because Full Circle is a place that people, because it has left such low barrier fixed to access. So it might take a little education around, like, whoa, why are you all this information, and maybe it's just some education. But I think we can make that happen if it means benefit to our community.
So what I think I'd like to do is, is at a future council meeting, when we have, if we know we've crossed the, crossed into going over our, our property tax revenue budget, to have that conversation with council, and then probably we would put it into a formal resolution for donation to your, your family resource center. I really appreciate you presenting tonight, thank you all so much.
Okay. We now have a presentation regarding a retail tobacco licensing program.
Man, you guys are very good at stealing this phone. My name is Jennifer, and I work with the public health, maybe the tobacco cessation coordinator. The reason why I'm reaching out to you today is that we're speaking with the board of county commissioner. We thought original approach to tobacco content would make the most sense. Your partnership in the system can help us decrease under the track of tobacco nicotine products. They are responsibility as, as we say. I want to put the quote that connects to our law in the public health. I cannot change the world, and cast a stone across the law to create many red by the truth. This quote reflects what I am doing in the tobacco. Over the past year and a half, I have made an impact with the relationships and connections to play in the county and improving delivery of existing resources and programs for tobacco prevention and cessation. The state, excuse me, the state tobacco education prevention partnership program, that's a local state, by the way, four steps is fully funded through constitutional amendment thirty-five, discharges money to county health departments. That grantees are funded for a three-year period that includes a year-long planning and relationship building. Guide our work and allocate resource in the most efficient and logical methods for creating implementation plans with primary activities and sub-activities to make large and sometimes complex goals more manageable and attainable. I also work closely with multiple subject matters experts that are also step grantees to help me along with tobacco prevention and cessation journey. Entering my second year in the step program, and I can already see progress being made in our county. My first year of tobacco work included comprehensive planning progress to guide work in the years to come. This included building a foundation within our community that focused on connecting with the school, offering supplier department, and local law enforcement. Within the past year, I delivered tobacco conveys on rich and educational materials to schools and hand tobacco boost throughout Lake County. Included in these resources is a second chance program, which is made for the school. Educate students on bacon tobacco boost if they are producing tobacco product on school property. Instead of offending or suspending or disciplining the student with punitive measures that are not permitted for allowed desired behavior changes, they would receive evidence physically. I can't talk to the camera, so sorry. Receive evidence of behavior-changing program rooted in education and social. This is to met, educate and move students to healthier behaviors instead of receiving punishment. For my fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the step program mandated that all grantees start off with a tobacco settlement for our counties. This is meant to help guide us in strategy, strategy selection, and provide the best resources available. I interviewed organizations and community members with serious related questions to get a feel for what our community's needs are concerning nicotine use. The data I collected from the assessment reflected the high rate of vaping among me and lack of cessation resources in our county. I recently called partner Taylor Trent, the deputy school director, as a school's contact for vaping prevention grant that applies through the attorney general's office. This funding is a result of a settlement, settlement of the Colorado Department of Law secured from Juul Act because of their part in creating the new vaping crisis we are witnessing nationwide. Taylor and I have been communicating about the possibly doing a presentation for the school on vaping and prevention for the grant implementation plan. Taylor and I are hoping to take this in place probably the next year sometime in September, as long as the grant is approved. I have also contacted the Leadville Fire Department to do a follow-up presentation on the dangers of vaping that are causing unwanted additionally, I have partnered with stomach care clinic that works directly out of the public office. But through our partnership, we found out that it is needed for folks to have tobacco resources and cessation through our partnership, we found out that it is needed for folks to have tobacco resources and cessation counseling at their fingertips. This includes the youth. I am very excited to see my progress in motion and drive into a community binding systematic change. Some things that I will continue to do throughout my implementation plan are stand for any housing complaints for clean indoor acts concerning multi-helth needs and health issues also. Monitor local retail environments and provide policy options to improve accountability for underage sale and access. Update organizations and communities on the mental compliance center. This includes handing out educational materials to innovations in the community. Support healthy kids Colorado survey to our schools to help data-driven decisions and program planning. Continue to build a strong foundation and understanding of tobacco prevention and cessation while exercising open communication and relationship. I want to spend some time talking about foundations since I mentioned it at the beginning. What happens when you build a health and unfortunately a wall? In my research during Lake County Tobacco Community Assembly, I we do not have a local tobacco retailer for our TR. And we have high reported rates of accepted delivery to tobacco buys at a point of sale. And additionally, I have brought the state inspection records to make further proof that we only received one calls to make a bid to inspection and were out of nine retailers failed the inspection by selling to underage individuals. This is one day out of three hundred and sixty-five. How many retailers sold to underage individuals on the other three hundred and sixty-five days in the year? This obviously points to a larger systematic issues. Thankfully, these are issues that can be solved through the existing options and rules. Before we get to the bill option, I would like to review some data for healthy kids Colorado for two twenty-one in the region thirteen, which includes Lake County and Leadville to gain further respect. Now, your decision. Forty-one point two percent of underage students who smoke cigarettes often through a gas station, convenience store, or grocery store or drinks. This points towards the problem of our retail environments and the willingness to sell to underage individuals and is also reflecting inspection failures from the DOR. With the local tobacco retail environments, we can decrease the high rate of underage sales requirement. Seventy-three point nine percent of underage students who tried to buy tobacco or vape products at the store were not confused because of their age. This number is also quite disturbing and points towards the same issue at the roll sale in retail environments. It's not okay to sell to provided tobacco products to underage kids. Individuals participating in underage furnishing are risking kickstarting a lifetime of nicotine addiction among our young people. One of the most impactful ways to reduce underage sales is the VDRR. To bring this point of sale discussion home again, forty-eight point two percent of underage students said it would not be far to get electronic vape devices. Again, this number should be much lower. Easy access to tobacco products, especially mine on underage individuals for the path of your addiction. Finally, twenty-five point nine percent of underage students who have used vape products use them for the first time at the age thirteen. This number is shocking and requires a multi-front approach to decrease early experiment experimentation and programs, educational resources, and policy options through all of Lake County. Now that we've reviewed the what and why of our tobacco-related issues, I would give you a shoot a few short examples, options, policy solutions, and tobacco retail licensing that can be local enforcement for underage tobacco fail, including random inspections twice a year resulting penalties for weekend. This encourages businesses to properly train employees and ID every customer so they do not felt privileged individual. Place a cap on number of tobacco retailers in Lake County. This decreases the availability of tobacco products in communities. If we control the amount of tobacco being sold in our communities, we can help folks make healthier choices. No one under the age of twenty-one can sell tobacco in a licensed retail section. State law that minimum legal sale age of all tobacco products at twenty-one. But the stores can still employ eighteen-year-olds to sell tobacco products by increasing the third age to the minimum legal sale age. We can help avoid peer pressure of selling tobacco products to other different people, especially in such a small community. These are certainly not all the options or benefits that tobacco retail in areas of Lake County. And I'm happy to discuss policy options with you uh, with this for a different time. The step program has resources and guidance with impactful and local TRLs which has just helped us to find accountability and responsible sale record. Multiple counties of both Colorado have implemented a tobacco retail system, including many of our neighbors, which is Pickin', Eagle, and Summit Counties. If you are interested in looking further into the TRL for Lake County, I'm really happy to discuss this at another time. In my best efforts, I'm finding ladder to make a positive difference concerning healthy outcomes associated with tobacco use within our community. I thank you for your time and your opportunity to present um, in past, current, and future work and work connecting and working with you all in the future. And I apologize, it's been a long day, so I'm not speaking very clearly. Um, I do know whether if you have any questions at this time, I'm more than happy to answer them. And I do also have Eric Brodel, which he is here via Zoom. And he is one of my technical assistant providers from the step programs. He's here to help answer any questions as well. I will drill with them too real quick. I did do a tobacco retail survey recently, so I went around to all the tobacco retail stores and asked them a series of questions. Um, and it was actually, I was really impressed with them. I was kind of nervous at first. I thought they were going to start swinging, but they all agreed. They were more than happy and they agreed that we needed TRL in place. They don't, they said that they would not be burdened by anything, um, none of the costs. They said that they were all for it. And by the way, I had to speak to managers. Just into just a random person. Um, and I believe I sent this to you in a package today, so you can look at.
Thank you. Other questions regarding tobacco retail?
Yes.
Um,
Oh.
So I you answered some of my data questions as to where you have the data, just for context, I used to at least study the HKCS data or the Healthy Kids Colorado survey data, the local circles. So those numbers track and they have been consistently bad since twenty seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but my uh, question was if I I just kind of wanted to get an understanding of the grand ask. My understanding is basically you're asking for us to have countywide licensing.
Yes.
Um, and what role does the city play if it's countywide licensing?
Uh, Eric, do you want to wrap that?
Sure. Can you all hear me?
Uh, Barry, please quiet.
Can you hear me?
Better.
Okay, great. Hi, everyone. My name is Eric Brodel. I work with the State Tobacco Education Prevention Partnership as a uh technical assistance provider. I only work on local policy. Um, so thank you for having me here today. Um, the answer would be um, that the county has jurisdiction over unincorporated land and the city of Leadville has jurisdiction over your incorporated land. So as the county is working on this, they were asking for your partnership to cover all of the land within the county because you only have the one municipality in Leadville. Um, it would be a joint coordinated effort. So we could have very similar ordinances in a coordinated enforcement structure as well.
And I was just gonna, when you have business or you have licensing that's uh similar in the city and counties is uh, you know, you is is that this for example, this city has jurisdiction over licensing than the city backwards. And so if someone uh, party has a county license, then you generally have to we we sort of
Thank you.
Can I say my words?
Can you tell us where the burden for enforcement falls? So who's responsible for these spot inspections?
Oh, yeah.
Licensing, of course, makes sense, but
So we actually are going to use um, Alana, who is in Modern Medical Health, correct? Um, she's going to do the inspections twice a year and she's the one who does the food inspections. And uh, so that's who we are going to use for our inspection.
And that may run the yes, inspections, yeah.
Not relying on the community service for the police department or anything like that. It'll all be through the county.
So this would be an ordinance, correct?
So what we would end up doing is, uh, we looked into this when I talked about Brown initially is that we would probably end up adding another or business licensing section. And I believe you provided me some samples from other jurisdictions. And yeah, it would be, it would be a code change. So the first reading and the second.
And if the county is also considering this, then I would I would think we would want our our ordinances to be very close, consistent with each other anyway.
Yeah. Whoever's doing the enforcement. And it it would be very similar to we did the um uh, updating our building code where we we align them as much as possible to to make the building inspectors' lives easier because they don't have two codes to enforce.
Right, right. What's the timeline for moving forward with something like this?
Uh, it, oh, I mean, just this Ms. Brown has given us a lot of the resources we need. It would just be a matter of staff bandwidth time to work with our city attorney to draft get a draft ordinance together and get it on our agenda.
Since we're so fortunate to have county here as well, where is it on your guys' timeline, do you know?
That's a good question. I when, when we have a meeting of I talked about pushing it through, trying to get it through, you know, sometime November. So we're trying to get it pushed through fairly quick, quick and painless. So
There's nothing to put on our notice, but Okay. Um, how does council feel about moving forward on on said? Can we give some direction to staff that it's something that we would support?
Absolutely. Yep.
Straw poll says yes.
Yeah. So I think where we are, just to give that council an idea of where we are with COVID revisions, big ones, I'm not going to speak for the running there are old sets proposed, but ones that we have discussed are our sign codes. So specifically, we had a lot of discussions about sample signs. Um, we have uh, but in the names of dark sky ordinance, um, that we have drafted and that needs to come to you all. And also would be back the ordinance. So we have a number of changes we are working on to bring to you all and we will put this in
in the mix. Okay. I really appreciate you coming.
Well, thanks, and I appreciate me fumbling my, for you guys listening to me fumble that word. Thank you so much.
You did hear it.
Steve, would you like to give a public comment on this?
Steve Crestash on three twenty-third Street. I agree that education is a key ingredient in the optimization of our youth by the tobacco industry. Uh, before the age of thirteen, uh, is what maybe said here, I can start smoking at voice gap meetings at the age of, after voice gap meetings at the age of eleven. About two decades ago, in newspaper reviews, Dark County News and Channel Post had an article that stated smoking tobacco was good for society in two aspects. One, while smokers went in their in their sixties will need about six months of expensive possibly medical care, that cost them terminate with their early death. While non-smokers will live into their eighties and need possibly a decade of medical care due to taxing income from uh, smoking. So since it's found that putting smoking tobacco was incredibly difficult, there is a drug addiction aspect which we as government participate in as a perpetrator. Besides the cancer causing issue leading to an early death, very responsive letter in two thousand twenty-three Scientific American, which was written by a bone specialist who did impart spinal fusions for elderly people. He states that he that not only lip life smoking can be a strong factor in in the osteoporosis. He also found that older people who needed spinal fusions, although not conceiving themselves smokers, did smoke when they were teenagers and as young adults. And therefore, he concluded that this early smoking can uh, since this bone form within beers and result in osteoporosis is um in much later in life. So I would think that some um possibly the school assemblies where people that are smokers would come in there and people with osteoporosis that were smoking would come in there and present their cases and students might have a little more shot at you. Um, and I think that might do so. Thank you, man.
Thank you, Steve. Okay. Well, pass my breast here up. We have a presentation by the sales tax task force. That was an effort. Tim is an effort at this now. And discussion.
Reading still, council members, staff in public. Should I introduce myself on the record?
Please.
Tim Bass, uh, six oh seven Harrison Avenue. Number representing Word Two. Uh, Christian woman that three seven and sitting on next slide. So um, the purpose of this presentation is really just to enrich the discussion that uh, will be forthcoming through a context. Um, basically, how we applied the recommendations we did and um, kind of counter. So um, this is a little bit of history. On March nineteenth, Revolution Twenty-One, thirty twenty-four, establishing task force and sales tax and bringing members to this task force. This was in response to P D Swims' presentation on March fifth, which they announced there's a petition to put up by for some ensure um, this coming event. Um, myself, Oliver Lill, wouldn't have been appointed. And there was discussion on who else should be at the table. Was there someone from the county? Um, say someone from P D Swims, possibly uh, nonprofit representative um, and a business representative. So the justice was simply with Brian and city sales tax in collaboration with P D Swims. Christian, feel free to chime in here. Um, our first meeting was on May sixth. Uh, President, we're council member, Oliver Lill, myself, Jane Harrelson, and Commissioner Beeler is here today. I'm also welcome to to add color to our record. Our task at this first meeting were clearly simple, like a chair that was yours truly uh, discuss scope of work. This was the discussions were really around whether to proceed this November, whether it was too soon. Um, and if so, much um, the sorts of issues. Uh, we already were discussing expanding the group due to only four being present at our first meeting. We originally, one council. And then discuss the timeline and possible other measures on the ballot. I'm ready at that point where the LCAG was considering running a ballot measure around the accommodations tax and LCSB. Um, more clarity on that now. Time, we didn't really know what they were playing. Excellent. So the outcomes of that meeting were uh, pretty much unanimous month before to consider a one percent recreation tax this November, half of which would be earmarked to Torque Center. Um, at this first meeting, we brought up the possibility of the county implementing tax. And it should be a little bit explore this with the B S C C. We decided to expand the group size to seven. Um, one of our really important points was the need for a larger discussion around taxation and revenue in collaboration with the county before November twenty twenty-five. And that those conversations need to start soon. Uh, but in the meantime, since P D Swims is going to run to take advantage of that and try to get something together for city by um, this November. Uh, timeline is tight. Um, we all got Laurie's uh, timeline. Thanks for that. The first deadline is July twenty-sixth for it's a D O R deadline. My second meeting, one June seventh. Uh, President, we're myself, council member, Oliver Lill, Jane Harrelson, uh, Lauren Barrett, St. Patrick, and Elsie Bag. Um, one of our, there was no county representation in this meeting. One of our tasks was to orient the new members, uh, what we have been discussing. Discuss further the abundance of potential task measures. Amanda from Elsie Bag had already indicated that she was, they attended the Pila Summit. Um, and had already decided to probably stand down this year. Um, update on P D Swims' progress. At this point, uh, Jane, also President, indicated that P D Swims might be open to standing down their ballot measure if they Indicated that P D Swims might be open to standing down their ballot measure if they approve of the city's language. Um. The need for county legislation was discussed and, you know, those outreach efforts continued. And at this point, we really need to clarify our. Positions to council pending county involvement. And um, next slide please. So we did come up with our two recommendations at that point. LC bag, custom drawing a measure I mentioned. Uh, checking with LCSB about, LCSB about possible measures that they were going to run mill levy. Um, clarity on that, particular June twenty fourth, D O E meeting. So the first recommendation, um, is what we have considered the first meeting, a one percent city sales tax recreation. Half of which would be earmarked earmarked twenty four. And that was P D Swims language. Um, and his sale, I believe. We had also, um, P D Swims had their meeting, um. Their info meeting at the Elks. And we confirmed with Tracy Lauritsen, who was there, that a city tax of one percent would raise approximately. Pretty good, pretty good, pretty good.
Um, just a little bit of context on this, um. You know, in our discussions, we went asked into lens of why. Reason would we go above the point five percent that was being proposed? A lot of that has to do with. Um, the difficulty of padding a sales tax. Um, and the benefits that it will bring to our community to have an additional point five of the general recreation. Which could be used for an aquatic center, you know, fish game and shop, or it could be used for anything else like our community center that we recently purchased. Or any other general recreation. We kept the language recommendation very vague. On purpose so that we have some flexibility as to where the funds go. Whereas the point five is earmarked specifically for aquatic center. Not necessarily just the current existing aquatic center, but the aid of what exists, and I believe that's consistent with P D Swims language.
And the second recommendation, and I don't want this when we get lost um, in the discussion that's more pressing. Was uh, to begin the discussion on the comprehensive community taxation strategy in collaboration with county. And for reference to reach out to county to include them in this current conversation. Um. We did discuss at that meeting that if the county does decide to concede with a one percent sales tax measure. Our recommendation would be for, for the city to stand down. In next slide please. So our third meeting is on June twenty first, just two weeks ago. President, we're council member, Oliver Lill, myself, Jane Haraldson, Lauren Barrett. Commissioner Beeler, Commissioner, Commissioner. So really, the, the point of this meeting was to get a sense from the county of where they stood. Um. Discuss whether they're going to push for a one percent tax. Um, and all the associated issues, like if a pool fund is created between the city and the county, who would administer it? Where would it live? Um, would the city have to remit, the county's five percent back? And then what the ballot language would entail as well. The outcome of that uh, meeting was. The commissioner indicated that the B S C C is considering a one percent tax in recent holding a work session. June twenty fourth, which is a week later, um, both of us were attendants at that. Um. That the county, if there, if there is a creation of a pool fund that. Yeah, then, and it is still. There seemed to be a consensus about making a very accounting measure. Um, and then I think we uh, we discussed pretty clearly the possibility of. The non-cool. Any such measure within the city, um, going towards the community, so. Lauren Barrett, who I wanted to be here tonight, but she's teaching Spanish at CNC. Uh, next thing. Can I do that, Christian?
Um. Even though we had an idea of where the right. Um, additional funds would go in previous site, we would still have. The flexibility for it to go in. So even though we have ideas of, oh, well, this would be going to go here, doesn't mean that it's into that.
So the V O C C work session on June twenty fourth. Invite commissioners to uh. To check in here, discussions around the cause of running a one percent increase. Um, uh, the gross simplification of the pros. Um, was that it would simply raise more money. Um, for a point two million in the county or in the city. Um, P D Swims measure is running anyway, so not running a measure is not even not going to be a pool measure. Um, and the opportunity to raise funds for other needs, I think, in the county, wildland mitigation and some other things were mentioned. And then the cons, um, timeline is too tight. Um, that is likely to fail instead of taxation fatigue. And that anything on the, on this. Year's ballot. Really going to happen future. Um. Then we also discussed the difficulty in competition with your pool.
And, and at this time, we didn't really have the background. Shared with us, there was also some discussion about. Uh, the complication between how the taxes currently work and understanding that background. Just to have that information. It's an opportunity to read some of that. It is much less complicated knowing how.
Um. The, the, the commissioners were. Really definitively split at the end of the meeting. Um, and then back forward today to the second last slide, oh no. So the, I need to reach from this entire discussion when. Meeting. Um, the process of the um. The district shuttering L C I switch. Falling around East Street Pool. And redistributing students between the other two schools. Um, so that possible sale of the building, for those who plan in jeopardy. At least the pool renovation plans in jeopardy, as Jane alluded to earlier. Um. So I had some communications with other council members. And uh, we decided to stay at war and commit to the existing recommendations yet system.
Yeah, I know you might not know a lot of detail about that D O E decision, but. Do they have any ballpark timeline? Would that be like next year or?
Well. Um, so the sword, which I was still on at that point, um, and it's pretty preliminary. Um. But the timing, it, it no way to do that with this coming school year. So it would be to move as quickly as possible, but with. The potential to vacate the building, the F C S building in the twenty five, twenty six. You know, for the twenty five, twenty six year, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, yes. So, you know, quick, but not immediate. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
And next slide. Sorry, I get, I mean, ju- just to add one, one thing that a CFO. Makes sense, it's important to understand the motivation here is that as they struggle with sort of finance. Financially sustainable. Plan the operational savings of consolidating into fewer buildings and campuses is, is a. Is a huge potential saving that are a significant saving that helps them, you know, stabilize their. Such as this.
Um, for context, their utility bills is a hundred dollars a year. Uh, maybe find the most. Yeah, yes, multiple factors.
Um, thank you.
All right, so uh, fast forward to today, um. Um, after rich discussion and a lot of public comment, uh, the V S C unanimously voted to not run. Um, our contingency in that place was this, in that. Uh, case was to stick with our recommendation. There will be concern. Um. Fact that's. Um, a rushed timeline. That uh, is going to have a future. Ballot efforts, especially considering that one of our recommendations is looking towards twenty twenty five. So last slide, I'm going to review those recommendations, and this is where we leave things um, to the council to discuss next slide. So we recommend that the city go forward with a one percent sales tax. Um, this would be the first city sale tax. Half of which would be dedicated to a fine for a portable public product center. That's P D Swims language. Um, we refer to the city engages in discussion around. In a strategy towards taxation revenue in collaboration with county gearing towards November.
Um, just to add a little bit of last context for these two, um. Again, our city council organization really was at the basis of, we want to work collaboratively, collaboratively with P D Swims. And the county, uh, understanding that it is a really complicated process and totally reasonable why the county wouldn't go. We still would like to work collaboratively with uh, P D Swims to. Have something on the ballot that is, um, you know, in the best interest of our community. And we feel like this is the right direction without doing any more deeper research. Um, that hopefully, um, as we touch on number two, that would be the continuation for the city council. So just because, you know, the county didn't pass something, we still want to work with the county. Um, as a council or as a task force, our recommendation is the city council works with the county. To ensure that we have not just sales tax, but any other taxes, any other potential revenues. Under wraps, and we understand what our toolkit is, so that we can best move forward as a community. Uh, for any reason. Any other thing, we just have not had that discussion as commissioners and as council people to really discuss. What is our toolkit? What should we utilize? What's our need? And I think this is, and we think is a task where this is an incredibly important part of this discussion. No matter what, I feel like we can all agree that this is probably the biggest lift. That we could have in the community, which is just get together, really plan these things out, understand what our toolkit is in the city. Understand what our toolkit is in county, who can address what, and work together to address a lot of our community current needs. That's it.
Thank you. I think the city administrator alluded to um, also having some input on. This, so I'm gonna shift to you now.
Sure, this is just more of a staff report to follow up on, and I, if there are no more questions.
Well, I'd do that and then we'll do questions.
So I just, I, I sent this information out. To the council members and County Manager Tim Bergman did a good job of summarizing the history of sales tax. The sales taxes in our countywide area, but I, I wanted to just put it in this meeting on the record as well, just in case there's people watching. Or people who watch this later, because they are fascinated with the improvements of local government, but. It, it, the sales tax situation is uh, on its face complicated, but when you dig into it, it's pretty simple. Uh, late in nineteen seventy one, we're suing to petition filed by the electors within the county. Um, voters of Lake County approved it, countywide sales tax one percent. So it's covered to all county. And uh, that was resolution, uh, by resolution by the board of county commissioners and essentially the revenue that was collected. Worked this, the revenues collected from businesses in the city, that revenue went to the, that suspect revenue went to the city. Revenue collected in the unincorporated areas of the county, that revenue went to the county. That was the division of how the, the money was divided. There oftentimes is a suggestion that it's per some kind of agreement or some type of handshake deal. It's actually in the ballot language. That's how that came about. So there isn't an intergovernmental agreement that decided that, it's the actual ballot language. So that's what was initiated in nineteen seventy one. City revenue started the city, county revenue started county, but it was a, it was a tax covered county. That was increased uh, by two, two percent by Lake County voters in nineteen eighty one. Which came, kept the same system of division of the tax. Um, in nineteen eighty eight, as you all know, there might, uh, there were a few things going on uh, in Levalle and uh, Levalle has partnerships. So there was an agreement to increase the tax four percent. But I'll save you the nitty gritty detail, but the essence of it is some of the money was given back um, to credit people toward their property taxes. The short-term property tax. So that's uh, essentially where we are. The voters start out with a system of the countywide tax, where the city sales tax goes to the city, those businesses. The businesses in the county, that revenue goes to the county, and that's, that's where we are today. Uh, that history is important. Because, you know, going forward, your ballot language would control whatever tax you put on the ballot or. In the sense of the county and what increase there might be. We don't have this in Levalle. We are one of the few cities in the state of Colorado. Uh, it is, I think Jenny Abbott pointed out today, it was an interesting perspective at the. County Board of Commissioners meeting, she said. Um, it is a missed opportunity for our community. And that is money that is not going towards our community, and it's an interesting perspective. I think that. Um, someday, there will be a sales in the city of Levalle. Someday, the issue is whether or not it needs to be now. Uh, but I think that the history of understanding how we got here, because in, in referencing this issue, we've seen emailed over the years. That there was a handshake deal between mayor, there's an I G A, it, it was in the ballot language, and that's the division of how the money came out. So that's where we are. We currently have no sales tax. Um. We sort of talked about the rush timeline and, and whether or not that there are conflicting priorities in our community right now. And the issue is that we've given you the timeline of when a potential uh, measure needs to be. Uh, presented to the department of revenue. We don't actually have to have the ballot language by then, but that's July twenty sixth. So is that a rush timeline and what are our priorities? So you may have heard that the. Um, school district may ask for a mill levy override. So that would affect people's property taxes. And there's a question, and it is a legitimate question that came out of the Board of Commissioners meeting today. Well, what impact would all these things have on each other? If the city ran a sales tax, would that harm the school district's chances of a mill levy override? What are our priorities? What is more important? What, what do the voters uh, want? Could you pass a one percent tax? Could a one percent apply? Could it only have a percent apply? What could it work for? Could it work for? Pool plus community center plus other things, and we're all guessing. We are not experts in this, and you know, thinking through internally and discussing with staff and discussing with the mayor. We don't try and do an engineering by, in the city, we don't guess. We don't guess at legal issues, we consult experts. And so internally, not what we decided we needed to do, and so we need to get some expert advice. And uh, if you have been around for much time, you'll have heard the word Magellan strategies. They are, that's what they do. They do basically felt like. For means of helping these local governments, in particular, to figure out if. It's time to do a ballot measure, they do a survey, they survey your demographics. And so that's what we decided we needed to do. The city has retained Magellan to do a survey for us. To determine whether or not, um, there is, uh, uh. Potentially, uh, the, the recommendation of the task force, if that's something that is feasible. Uh, is it on a timeline that can happen this year? Uh, is it something that could include the pool? And so these are all questions that we have, that we didn't have the answers to. And so we need to go to the experts to get those answers. Uh, I'm happy to send something around to you this, um. So Magellan has been around since about two thousand and seven, and um, essentially. They provide state, local and county governments with um, information about ballot measures. Uh, they do information about turnout, demographics, drafting and testing ballot language. Um, they basically do a survey. So it's answering all these questions that we have now. What should the percentage be? What should the ballot language say? What do voters want? What do they care? And uh, they just did one recently for the city of Wee Ridge, which um, was focusing on uh, a. Uh, potential pass and set sex extension to Bud Street and Road Improvement Projects, the Hubble Projects. And I'll give you the presentation that they give. They give the demographics, they give you. And I'll give you the presentation that they give. They give the demographics, they give you information about, you know. Do you think things in Weir are heading in the right direction, or do you think things are on track? And then they ask specific questions about the tax itself and what potentially you could go for, and then they'll provide to you basically all that they have on those. The interesting thing about Magellan is that they are familiar with like, they ran the survey for the school district or the one major. Their recommendation was the school measure, the school on measure included. The school district understandably for their own reasons did not want to run a pool. So they did not include funding for the pool. So their one measure didn't pass, we will never know. If the school district followed Magellan's advice, it would have passed because we, it didn't happen, we can't test that. But they are very familiar with one. They are very familiar with the desire for a pool. They're very familiar how to do a survey here. They're really familiar with our demographics and the statistics school numbers they need to get to give us a decent survey. So what I think is, we've gotten a recommendation for marginal tax. We need to figure out, is that a feasible recommendation? And so for the discussion tonight. I think the, the idea is we realized we needed more information to get to you all, because this is a discussion. And we put it as a discussion for a reason, because I don't think we have enough. We'd like to get you that information before you're asked to make some very big decisions. Oh, and.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just.
No, nope. I wanted before we launch into discussion to add an additional wrinkle. Because there is nothing about the situation if it is not really wrinkled. So. Ruby, yeah. Right. So Fiver. So Commissioner Mudge brought up at this meeting today, you know, like one of the wrinkles for the county is that if they go through this. The, this rushed process and their measure fails. State statute says they cannot run another measure for two years, so they're gonna do it, they want to do it right. There. So that state statute does not apply to the city. However. There are state statutes that limit what the city can do depending on what the county does, so. Ms. Leblon, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if the county, let's say next year, runs a measure. The city cannot run a sales tax measure that same year. We just, we just can't. So in terms of working together and strategizing, how, i- in the context of getting good information and more information of. What are the community's appetites for, you know, like what would they vote for a sales tax increase? Like what, 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 what destinations for that money would be compelling for them? How much would they, but would they approve of, like these kind of questions that Magellan can answer? In addition to that, strategizing with the county, we have to make sure that we're not trying to do things on the same year. So was that fair?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Thank you. Great job.
Thanks. All right. Now, now to us, so.
Questions?
Yes.
This is my understanding, you guys were at the meeting today and I was young, but this is my understanding that the county bowed out. Tax measure on the ballot in part due to the fact that without a feasibility study, they would potentially forfeit Dolea funds.
That's great. Yeah, so the. Yeah, I'm trying to hear, but. The Dole representative basically said we would have to halt the feasibility study, which is, you know, it's relatively early stages. If the county wanted to put a tax measure.
And my understanding is that the city could also potentially be available to Dolea funds, but I would assume that Dolea would hold us to the same standard.
No.
Because Dolea funds were specifically funded this feasible.
Understood, but, but. If we tried to get our own grant from Dolea, it's a city separate from the county, we could also run it to the same.
Not the ground shifting underneath an already existing situation is the problem.
Yeah, my understanding from Ray Lee C, who was there. It changed the terms of their existing contract.
Yeah.
So we don't have an existing contract with Dolea for, for. Well, eleven two. But I think that was there, that was the point, this, these changed circumstances might, might. I, you know, we're gonna ask if we have. Many, many, many cities have sales tax. If that was, if you had a sales tax, and that prohibited you from getting Dolea funding, ninety eight percent of the cities in Colorado.
Commissioner Feeler.
Due to the conversation I think. The point raised by Dolea was that one of the liberals in that. Was an initial. You know, yeah, yeah, true.
Where the funds take me sent in advance?
Well, the funding's. So if you have a sales tax, it's like one day. So it feels like you're. Getting determined worse. Way, you know, sort of rejecting.
Thank you. That, I think that's.
Yeah.
And I think their position was that it changed the scope of work for, so that. They did potentially change the scope of work for the money that Dolea gave them, so they were out there. He did change the scope of work and. Potentially decrease the amount of funding that they were getting since part of the feasibility study was to come up with a funding plan. And if you just don't have a funding plan, you don't need a feasibility study.
So it wouldn't necessarily mean like the grant would go away, it was just a pause while they reevaluated. That shifting landscape.
It sounded like a pretty hard stuff.
Oh, well, I think it threw a lot of cold water.
Thank you.
On the, on the appetite when you move forward.
Very interesting. So. Quite a bit of a sign, not touching, but looking at this building that's the rec center. And it's, there's a pool attached to this, it's either vacant or not vacant yet. What about my idea of turning that into workforce housing somehow? And, well, at the same time. I don't see why, with some kind of communication and have a staff. So there'd be a security issue there, so. Something like that, and that could draw more funding because it would be.
It's an interesting idea. I do not think it would be something the city would. Would, would do.
Yeah, if the, if the community in our media school is, is potentially up for sale, I think. I don't think the city is in a position to purchase it and do that with it.
All the questions, go ahead, may I ask Jane a question?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Thanks for being here. Have you or, and PB Swims done any sort of. Research on likelihood of the measure passing or?
No, so we're, we are going to send out a ballot. That's our plan. Because. At this task force meeting, they've been saying, hey, will PB Swims drop their citizens initiative? And collaborate with the city or county on a sales tax measure? And it's not up to me, it's up to the supporters that have donated fifty six thousand dollars over three and a half years. And so when we get more information now, you know, the county is not going to run one. So that questions off the ballot survey. And when we get more answers about what the city's plan is. We'll know more, and that school board meeting really helped us too, because. You know, they're, they're a place, it's their building. It's our building, it's our public property, but they're the stewards of it, so. Them deciding to, that they can't afford to operate that building in the school anymore. It made our. Question, questionnaire shorter, but we're not going to get that out to get more information. But to answer your question, we haven't done that research, but we plan to.
And related to that. Would, would you know if those respondents are in city limits, like?
We would, we would ask one. So some of these people don't even live here. Like Becca, she doesn't live here, she's not even serving. This one of survey's questions is, are you registered to vote? Are you registered to vote in the city and whatnot? But even if they're not, the people that are supporting this, their opinion matters. Their, their opinion, if they say, yeah. With the city, you know, half for indoor recreation, half for the pool. Their opinion matters, even if they can't vote on it, because they're the ones that are supporting this project to get an affordable public aquatic center.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. So. Percent. It's gonna be four hundred fifty five thousand dollars.
Roughly.
How far does that could go?
It, it won't go very far in renovating that, Tim. That is for mainly operations maintenance. And capital reserve replacement funds. We've done, we need to, you know, the cost gets higher and higher, both our capital budget and our operating and maintenance budget. Increased daily, almost. So one of the reasons we've gotten to this point is when we've applied to funders. They have said, well, this sounds like a great project, but we don't want to fund the renovation of the aquatic center. And then in two years, it shuts down because you don't have operating funds. So that is why we are moving towards.
And. But it's tangible sale of the intermediate school. And you have no.
Right, so in the ballot, and I can send you our petition and our proposed ballot language. So say the voters pass this. And the school district sell. The pool out from underneath the taxpayers and. Say a skate park. And they turn that pool into a state of the art skate park. It's all under a pool. What, what happens to the money? Well, the money in the ordinance, in the petition, the proposed ordinance. The money goes to a fund for an affordable public aquatic center. And you might say, well, that's kind of weird, and it is, but it's happened in this community before. In the sixties and early seventies, I learned how to spend in the East Sixth Street Pool. Shop now, have a shop right next to the.
Sixth Street Gym.
Incidentally, I've been told that that plumbing is still in there. But anyway. The school district put a bond issue for a new intermediate school on the ballot. It failed twice. The third time they added a pool, it passed. The county had a fund, because they were planning on building a new pool, a new indoor pool for the community. Because the one on East Sixth Street, it's only open three months a year, and they needed a bigger pool, open more. So the county gave two hundred thousand dollars. Within their fund to the school to defer the maintenance costs. And then the school district signed an agreement, I have a copy of this agreement if you'd like to see it. That if the pool in gym would be open to the public, to the resident, as a rec center. And. Incidentally, Mr. Prestatch, that's a very interesting idea about housing. Because where I went to fifth and sixth grade here in Lake County. That's now housing, and it wasn't for a time, but now, you know, those four buildings at the end of Mount Mathis Drive. Now those townhouses are gone for a pretty penny, so. Is, both these things have been done before.
I guess my concern is. If it passes. And then they sell the building. Then nothing is happening for a pool. Then we lose the trust of. Who will be like the member that we voted for in the pool and where's the pool?
I don't think the voters have trust in the government here with regards to pool. Like, I know I can. But you're right, you have a good point, but I, I don't think we're strong there anyway.
And I think, you know, more to add to that, there. You know, this goes back to the Bush thing, of course, county is looking into their own facility. With the funds being earmarked very generally, the ability for it to be very generally work. That opens the funds to be able to be used for the future in any way, so even if. Voters, so, you know, for very reasonable reason, lose trust in that, those taxes will continue to exist for perpetuity. Until that pool is constructed, in which case ideally, of course, voters would be. Feel really wish that that happened, and of course, if that does happen, we do have to take a few years break. I just saw the funds to build up and have a more hefty, actually logic need to address the need.
Go ahead.
That was, that was gonna be my next question is, if, can the funds just accumulate year over year until? Let's say, so if we're raising approximately five hundred thousand dollars a year. We get to a point where it could match some other funds to help build an aquatic center, is that a possibility given this?
That's how, that's how we asked the lawyer to write it. Because, because people are saying, hey. What if the school says no, and it turns out they? But that is, we all need to remember, the school district is a student of that, it is public right.
I, I have a, a question, and I don't know, Commissioner Healer, if you can answer this, or if this is a municipal attorney question, or if it just. Goes over outside of all of our wheelhouses. But, you know, like the city, let's say if we wanted to sell City Hall. But we've been actively using this for government purposes. We would have to go to the voters for an approval to sell this building. For the record, we are not considering it. Just an example, is, if, if the school district, which is a district, wants to sell one of their facilities. Is there some, is there a process by which they have to follow to do that, or can they just be like, eh, we're not really using this anymore, let's.
It's different in terms of. And it's on like, this is the school district, they bury me and. About this more disposing of assets, including land or real estate. At this last meeting, it's been proposing selling land. To meet its short term actual objectives, and there is.
So that's, that's something that's just dictated within our unit.
Yeah, so they don't, and it's like, they, they have to just state that there's no foreseeable need for that asset.
Thank you.
That's further reinforced by the regional authorities and the county's initial. You know, talking is about the, some line that they had. Being a choice.
The reason I asked is, is like for us, like using land that we're not, or selling land that we're not currently using is easier to dispose of. We don't have to go to the voters than say, selling something we are actively using.
Is that true though? I mean, we have other properties that we are not currently using that would have to go before the voters, before we could put the law.
I think you.
We researched this issue because the city owns one block out. And we, I asked our secretary, he said, when we would have to put it to the voters to sell it, should I take it, if it was donated to the city? One person.
So do we have, whether we have to go in front of the voters? So we have plans for a community center for a property that we bought. That's not currently, not currently in process, we wouldn't be able to, that probably. In front of the voters, is that correct?
Well, we'd have to go into that, definitely show what it means, it's vacant, and we have not occupied it, and we haven't put any burgers. We'd have to dig into the rest.
Now, as a, very new to that, and to go back to my previous point, half of this sales tax proposal would be to fund. Future community center in a property that we own. If we quoted that um as a tax measure, would we then potentially forfeit any grant funds to to help operate that piece?
No, because, y- you know, we, I, I spoke with this very obvious. You know, there's. You can't operate. So the on-ramps and durations, and so a lot of the money you'd be looking at from, uh, whether it's congressional directed spending, whether it's EDA funding, whether it's uh state PD, CDPG funds, the DOLA funds, also a lot of that would be for the rehab of the building. But as uh many, many, many times, Ms. Day came to us and said at the table of upper house. You, you really cannot get grant money for operations.
And that's, that's not my point, I guess my point is that would we stand a chance of forfeiting in by putting.
I don't think we would, I think it would be the opposite, I think we would be able to leverage sustainable funds to show granters that if they partnered with us, those funds would go to get the assets.
Yeah.
The examples I've seen, this, this case with the DOLA grant, it seems like a different type of situation. But I think it would only leverage more.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear from you along that, to be honest.
Absolutely get an answer. We can, we can get that answer, you know, one of the things that we had talked about about um in the process of the community center is readiness. And they have had grant levels, but not since we have our infinity center and one of their criteria is readiness. And I think one of the things Council of the Guard is bringing out is viability. And you know, to, to show that you're providing, again, your feasibility, shows that you have a financial planner, if you have done this through that. And I, I mean, you think one of the things, and it's also the explain too, and one of their good points in getting grants. Is that they have not been able to show us the partnerships and the, the, the things that they have been told they needed to show in order to get that grant, so I think that it, I think it is true, Council of the Guard says it, it may work just the opposite.
Just to address uh something Julie said, um if the, if council wanted to make that not pool happen, the center. Community center, that would be a decision of council, that's kind of condition, is that it's more general, that all of it is one percent recreation tax, which is earmarked an affordable public aquatic center. Certainly, you know, that's. In terms of recreation, what other need is there in city? Than the, than the.
Are you asking me for my, my long list of desired funding streams for various contracts?
No, I'm saying recreation, if, if we make it a recreation act, we don't have a recreation, the community center is the obvious need. And that was discussed, that's not what we.
Thank you for clarification.
Yeah, I think that's one thing to be careful about about. Is that really the key is, it is, I've mentioned this to you before as an example. Your start with where about when we pass, and uh this became very current in California, where they passed, okay, California, uh, uh state residents passed about, they wanted high-speed rail from Los Angeles to San Francisco. That's what the ballot said. And then they figured out that running the rail, speed rail from San Jose to San Francisco was insanely expensive. It went through some insanely expensive area, you don't have to put an end to domain. It would have been easier to run a high-speed rail from Los Angeles to San Jose. And then let the commuter train take people across the way and then crew do it, because the ballot language said. Not San Jose. So that's when you're looking at the whole, because you, you need experts to tell you, like, yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna say we're gonna have to be a pool in San Jose. This thing and this other thing, because we don't know. So you make it broad enough so that there's a contingency if, for whatever example, an affordable, uh you had a great. Affordable public supplies. Get, get, bring, get friends, because then if one half are back. And for some reason, another half isn't correct. Opportunity opens up. You're not, you're not the cancer, you're not your doctor.
So, another question, you decide to go with Magellan. With the survey. Wouldn't that happen, wouldn't we have to push it out for next year?
We, we went over the time, the, the deadlines with Magellan, and they were like, we've definitely seen worse, it's not too, too short of a of a request.
Do we have to have survey done before July twenty-sixth?
Well, it would be great, you don't, uh, you don't, those are some of the questions, and those were the same information we needed to know is, are we too late? And we got the information that we're trying to Magellan and having conversations with people in August, and I was like, okay. There are people who are, you know, in, in, in different situations than we are in, what the answer we got is, you'll need to hustle. But it's not too late, if you wanted to do it with this. And uh they, Ryan is working out a potential survey for now, it would be some of the basic recommendations of that the sales tax task force, now that we know where that is, tonight, we can have them start putting that together. By twenty-sixth, when we go and consult the Department of Revenue. We just have to say, this is what we're thinking about, but we don't actually have to have a ballot language. And part of that is, that's kind of relatively new, the Department of Revenue really wants any municipalities to consult them about uh increase or decrease in the sales taxes, and I think it's just to make sure that they're making sure municipalities and local governments have, uh.
I give you that question, is what it'd be possible with that issue survey, and where is that coming from?
Um, two good questions, uh, I think that the ballpark we have right now is a thousand dollars, and it would come out of our professional services other budget fund in the city.
And what are we having a budget fund? Figure?
Um.
There's not.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're. I think so, and actually, I think the good news is, I'm not gonna sell your thunder, we.
Go ahead.
No, basically. Is we thought we're gonna spend some of that money, but we not now, uh, so, yes, i- the professional services other, I think, is a little, um. We spent some money on um engineering. For rail yards, our engineers will get rail yards and compliance there. The real question is, can we go out of rail yards and take some of that money out of the extra funds, and that is a possibility. So we have been spending money on that professional services other, but I think um while we have spent some of it, don't look at that and be like, that money is gone for good. Uh, we may be able to get some of that money back from rail yards, and there may be another thing that happens that the mayor's gonna announce at the end, and we, we also.
Hey, cause I would, I would like to see that survey happen, so we have a little more data to, yeah.
I, I wanna um take Councilmember Thomas's input.
Thanks, Dana, um, so I've been listening to the conversation, and I think generally I'm supportive of a sales tax. I recognize that we have one of the lowest tax rates in the state. I, I would like to understand a little bit more about Magellan strategies, I think we, we do need to complete a survey. And really understand from the community what our priorities are, and I think we'll be in a much stronger position. If the city and PB Swims and the county are all working together towards a project. So as we engage Magellan strategies, will they be looking at this sales tax issue holistically? Or just from the city's perspective, because I'd be very curious to have a better understanding of what happens if the county doesn't move forward. Maybe the city moves forward, maybe we don't, but PB Swims does move forward, that seems like that's risky for everyone involved. Uh, so I just wonder what kind of advice we can get from Magellan that kind of takes a more comprehensive look, and I, I don't think I heard the answer, do we have a rough um estimate on how much Magellan strategies will cost to conduct such a survey?
Ballpark estimate they gave me is ten to twelve thousand.
Okay, thank you.
A ballpark estimate, uh, what is, is, I think we can structure the survey questions and we, i- i- and in working with Magellan is what we want them to ask. They're probably gonna give us ideas about best things to ask, like, hey, don't forget to ask this, don't you know, but I think in asking some of the questions, I do think uh, you know, how important is it to include the affordable public aquatic center? You know, how uh, how important it is, is it that this is um a county-wide measure? Or are you comfortable with this being a city measure, do you understand the difference? Uh, so I will, these are, these are good points to take back, we're in, of literally the first few minutes of this discussion, because this is all happening so fast. So this is good, these are good, give me those questions, I'm, I'm, I'm having to go to them and say, okay. When we do the survey, we've never done this before, it's all, it's all into all of us.
And I do, before, I just, I just wanna reassure everyone, like, this is on our agenda tonight as a discussion. We won't be voting on anything, we will not be deciding to be like, yes, let's do the sales tax. Um, I think what staff would like is some, some kind of direction, like, if, do you approve of, of using uh an, an outside resource to establish if there's an appetite for sales tax, if so, how much, if so. What, what destination are, are people interested in send, in that money being dedicated to, et cetera?
Let's not put on it in two weeks, because I mean, that's ten days before the July twenty-sixth.
Correct. So, that's why we threw out the, just the potential work sessions.
Yeah, so, if I may. Center discussion, a two-part discussion, let me. Uh, we discussed that, like, the first part, which is the proposed this year's tax, the other discussion, of course, is collaborating with the county uh for future funding. I think the first one is best, if, it would be appropriate to just go the random one percent, I feel like, you know, as a city council member. Um, as well as man who's on task force, we do take uh Laurie's recommendation that we go forward with Magenta's.
Just.
Magellus study, and we um use that rather than just hard road, uh, not PB Swims, but just the task force more random one percent. Um. Think that's super for me and for council, and that that seems like the final step for the first part of the recommendation of the task force, is that okay with everyone?
I agree.
To proceed with Magellan?
Hmm, yeah.
As long as the timeline works. Um, and you stepped along the way in the time. Just wondering, at what point is it a bridge too far, if there's no chance, so. Um, presumably, we could file on July twenty-sixth, and then we should do something. Do it. Uh, so when is the latest point at which we cannot?
September something, uh, let me look at it, because uh we have, so we would, I'm gonna pull up the email that's to everybody with the time deadline, the, the issue is that we're gonna go down the road, if we go of getting, getting the data, and then we can develop, now we have some information to potentially decide what it may look like. And then by July twenty-sixth, we consult with the Department of Revenue. Then we have to have uh the uh ballot language drafted, and then it's first reading and a second reading. All that, it's still not too late to be undone, I think that too late to be undone is when you get to the point where the clerk needs the ballot language to warn about. And I think that is, sorry, you're. Yeah, so I think that's when you get to the point where you have to give the language, I just out of respect. Or don't wanna, you know, less.
Lori, if you want me to jump in here, I have the election calendar pulled up, um. So forty-five days before the election will be the last day to send ballots, um to overseas voters, so that would, I'm trying to see. Um. Even before that, um sixty days, so that's September sixth is the last day for the city clerk to certify um ballot order and content.
Yeah, so that's.
Is, I'm kind of going backwards, August twenty-seventh is the last day to sign um an IGA with the county for a coordinated election.
Uh, we did that.
Okay. So, there, there are a lot of key deadlines um in early and late September.
Yeah, so it looks like, I mean, I think it, September sixth is the last day for our city clerk to certify the ballot language, so that's whatever we're talking about, the county clerk. That's the last day, I would wanna give the county. So some, some immediate time, of course, September sixth is.
So we got two months.
And then once it's on the ballot, the council members cannot advocate for it.
Correct.
Or speak about it.
Pretty much.
Um, in their official. In their official.
We can submit as individuals, like, like to the blue book, pros and cons, you know, either a pro or con, that sort of thing, as individuals. To, that's about me.
And one of the things, Tim, I don't, it's not, I, it's not that I don't trust you, I trust you, it's just I don't trust government. So nothing.
I wonder, you know, if we can, in, in the spirit of knowing that city and county can't run together on the same year, coming from the position that we do not have a city sales tax. Uh, if it were left up to me, I got a, a long list of things I would like to generate revenue for to improve and expand um city services, but is it possible? I- i- you know, if we can guide Magellan on some of their survey questions, can we add something like hey, you know, would you, you know, like, what would be your support of a multi-year, a tiered sales tax, you know, like one where the money would go to you know, our community center, and one where the money would go to the everything center, what are you guys calling it, Superhome? I, I don't know, that thing, the, the big community center, El, El Community Center Mayor, um. I mean, could we, I think that would be useful information to both of us, to both of our bodies.
Well, that was a question that internally we were asking about, um. You know, and how the city tax could work to benefit the, if, because the county tax would be counted, just like they did within the city, it's technically just the city tax, we know the whole county, so we do accounting tax, we don't wanna do the city one. And so the question I asked for the city attorney was, well, okay. You know, we could put in the ballot, just a certain portion of that money would go to informal fights. You, you can't really put in that certain percentage would go to the county, because you're blocking the city, but it would go into the city's general, and we could make an allocation to the everything center. Point, if you wanna do that, and, uh, but that's a good question, could you do a ballot measure that said, it's this percent for the first year? For recreation, and then in the second year, it increases by point two-five percent. And that point two-five percent goes towards streets, because for those of you who have been on the council long enough, we have had discussions about two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars per year. To, it, well, and my point is, it's like, it's like the box bandages you get, and it's the little baby round Band-Aid that's this big that you never actually, you know. So, you know, we have, we have needs in the city that are well beyond the, the general revenue that we have, and the question really is as a city in a strategic plan, what are our, you know, facilities, working at age of facilities, working at age of streets. So yeah, maybe we could ask them and say, what does it look like, and we do, and they may just tell us, okay, stop. At this point, that's too many questions, and it's, it's too common, but they might say, no, you can ask us, we can get that information.
I'm gonna throw in another wrinkle. That is my specialty this evening, and that is, the ballot this year is enormous. Is enormous, it might be seventeen pages, not kidding. With the number of state measures, with the number of you know, local measures, it, it's, it's going to be huge. So that is an additional, I would think, impediment to, to really doing anything, kind of.
It, it's, it's a, it's a double, it's, it's a double X within that as a motion year, and you get a greater turnout, just in general, maybe for presidential. Usually you get a greater turnout in general, what I would. Usually you get greater turnout, what I'm saying is for, um, for local measures and education is key, making sure people understand what it is, making sure it's simple and um, you know, getting off the boat, like, there is, there are an army of people who are, you know, willing to knock the doors and, and get people to.
To recenter our conversation, sounds like a lot, and it seems like councils in favor of. Um, a lot of research I have to be done, quite frankly. And we can discuss afterwards on whether it's gonna work or it makes sense, but I feel like it would make sense to just send a recommendation of a more direct work session about it. Um, so, I mean.
There's Christian, that was, yeah.
Would we have a, would we have a work session before we were into the direct Magellan? I'm just wondering who's gonna be able to direct Magellan in the direction of their questions?
Well.
Who would have input?
I would call them tomorrow and, and find out some of the things that you asked questions about this morning and find out quickly. I mean, the other issue too is that we can do things, um, you know, we, we can get one-way communication going um outside of a public meeting. We cannot get two-way communication because it's violation of the Meetings Act. But I can push out information to say, this is a sample survey, these are sample questions. You can write to me and say, here's a question I have. We can't do the reply hall, we can't do conversations, but we can, we can put together some of that and then um, have the work session as soon as possible.
Okay.
Easy, Tim.
Yes, please. Um, would you, can we, it, would it be useful to just go ahead and put a work session on July ninth on the?
Well, yes, we were talking about July nine and twenty-three because those are the only days we have before the twenty-sixth and we really wanna talk this, catch this up. Yes.
See.
Okay.
I'll check.
Are there final thoughts, questions, guidances to staff, please, Steve?
Really like the story you said about the uh street department. Um, I, I think possibly Magellan should consider asking about proving the streets. And one aspect of that would be buying the machine that lays the catamout and accrue to, accrue that. Being that infernal thing maybe a year or two from now, I like that.
They weren't making fortune by running that back seat on and finishing their bell pass.
It would be the closest one they have.
I have one parting thought is, I'm really excited about this for a few reasons. Um, I think that it's really important as we imagine our future as a community that we are making sure there are ways that our visitors can help support some of our infrastructure costs. And sales taxes do that. I don't love that sales tax also increased cost of living for residents, but if it's, if it's not sales tax where visitors and locals alike are paying it, it would need to be a property tax or something where locals are bearing the brunt of that. There's also a broad body of research indicating that as communities become more tourism and amenity economies, if they're not leveraging visitor contributions to infrastructure, that's when things really go downhill. Um, because those, that economy is harder to tax than, say, a large extraction economy with these large singular businesses. So I do think this is, needs to be a really important part of our, our um local government's future and the support services for our community members.
What's coming up on that? Uh, in talking with Mayor Green earlier, um, it occurred to me that a citywide uh tax that's restricted to the city limits, well, the spending that's done within the city limits as opposed to in the county where Safeway and Big R Saturdays are more likely to get that visitor.
Yeah.
Income, gift shops, restaurants. Yes, also convenience stores, so I'm not entirely, but I think it'll um impact. Um.
Uh, Big R is.
Yeah, but I think, uh, you know, and I think that data is findable, like, we, we would have to use a data mining company, but it's something that, that I'm curious about is of the money, of the sales tax or of the sales within the limits of the city, what comes from phones that reside out of Lake County? Versus phones that reside in Lake County.
Which I think brings us to our second point on recommendation, just collaborating with the county. I think that was a given, but I do wanna emphasize that that is, we as the sales task force wanted to ensure that council was on board with and understood the implications of it, which would hopefully counties open to it, uh, be meetings with the county and work session for. So, this year is.
You know, we are, we are talking with another county department about the possibility of sharing a, a dating one platform that would, that, that both entities could use. But we'll see where that goes.
So is it fair to say that council would be open to have those work sessions with the county on future planning for uh community revenue?
Absolutely. Sorry, I would even propose, or at least ask, should that include other taxation entities in our community? Like school district or the sanitation, water, CMC, because we are all, it would be best if all of us were in coordination.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's something is everybody has so many meetings and trying to think about do that collaboration and I think, you, maybe it's, um, it's a good example to take our estimation, just reach out to us and says, just once a year, here's, here's what we're, here's what we're planning for grants.
Yeah.
Are we gonna keep looking at you? And maybe it's just something like that, that we have that check in, because I, I, I know we have meeting fatigue. I mean, I don't know, I can be further conditioned, but we learn, but uh, you know, we, we have merit and I just sometimes inviting folks to their meeting is a little hard.
Well, there's a reason the task force only had three meetings.
Yeah.
Since March.
There is a weird reason.
One more question about the task force, one of the things that it was, it was an original point was to make sure that we had a community member and a business member, and I don't see it to be like that involved.
Yeah, I mean, I'd rather not get that into the public record who declined, but I did make an effort to get uh business owners involved. And then Jane uh was serving double duty as a business owner and representative of PB Swims, but there was an effort made and it bore no fruit.
We, you had a business that are attended one point.
Yeah, he attended to announce that he would not be attending.
For, for like two seconds.
It just seems important to have somebody who doesn't have a vested interest involved.
I agree.
Commission, given the up.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think that's one of the things maybe we can ask to all is, we did this with the sandwich board um discussion. Because we thought it was really important to a lot of people.
It was a good proposition that.
Well, and it, it was not until very, we said, every, but what I would ask you is, we now have those work sessions on the calendar, just please ask people to come to those and if they have an opinion, please come into those. Because what I do think happens is, it's, we get so far down the road and then somebody finally hears about it and then they're gonna come in with information or questions that could have been helpful for us for a year.
Is that something we can get on the city's website? It's a, it's a public information, I, I do, is it public information?
Yeah.
For those who.
Yeah, I think this, this kind of stuff I definitely, you know, I, I don't, very important subject for a lot of people. And when we have meetings or we know people care and they're not here, I think it's just because maybe they haven't heard, because I know, we've seen them on social media. You know, and that shouldn't be the only way we hear, but you know, that's sometimes the way we hear about.
No, absolutely, and that's, that's my only reason, is everybody who showed up to every meeting had a vested interest in that conversation. So I wanted to make sure that we expanded beyond that threshold. I think that's gonna be very important for this ongoing conversation.
And I think it goes back to what Lori said, it, it's hard to have those discussions and be vested in it. If, I mean, just quite frankly speaking, the outside perspective is, well, they're not gonna do anything anyways, why bother? It's a waste of time. Why, what I show up to means, I'm not speaking for any specific business owner, I can totally understand the perspective. As Tim said, we could invite multiple people.
Yeah, all, all the more reason for us to ask one game.
What we didn't wanna do was just an open invitation, you know, we wanted to just target, ask into the jewels and.
Well, for a task force, yes.
Work session, I hope it is, not the invitation.
Yeah, some of the things maybe we could have wherever our research is left, uh, it's Bailey and, and, you know, some of those man lists from uh Main Street and Chamber and some of those, that's why I'm excited that, you know, we're re-fact organizations, because one of the things we want to push out, communication was just reminiscing about the first meeting that a city council began that it came to, it wasn't even a city yet, we're trying to figure out how already to get in touch with all the businesses to inform on the lodging tax. Just give it your chamber, well, you know, we, we were about to say chamber, but that would be great.
In the meantime, maybe we could send it to the EDC, because it is still relatively by, uh, and as, it's a local business. Maybe that's just a test, but after their minute.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, I think that there is no harm in gathering essential data that might inform a tax decision. Um, and there's potentially great gain so that we can make a wise decision in moving forward and not just waste our time getting enthusiastic only to have it yield nothing. Um, is there anything else anyone would like to add to this great discussion before we move on?
I want to expand the sales tax task force.
Do we need a, do we need to, a resolution for that, or do we?
Well, it's a discussion.
It was a resolution.
Was a resolution to create it.
Yeah, I think we could, um, we'll put on, send again.
Yeah.
Bingo.
I'll repeat that as you name it.
Yes, Councilor Thomas.
Very quickly, I just wanted to thank Tim and Christian for their work on this sales tax task force. And that was above and beyond duty, trying to pull together the meetings and the people, and I really appreciated the presentation tonight, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, ready to move on?
Please.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, we usually take a recess around eight, should we take a little five-minute break? Can we open up some windows? That boiler is just working overtime today.
Okay, we, we didn't announce on the candy.
I did, I did, when you weren't down here, when everybody fired.
Put it out on Facebook, the people that showed up speaking tonight, we did not know why.
They didn't know why.
The reason we were coming, we got some candy. Candy, for.
Yeah.
We didn't know why.
I, I wanna make sure that.
But we, we have candy ready.
We don't, we don't, no one thinks.
Not bad. Didn't work.
It's not in the pink bucket.
Yeah, this, I think, well. And that did, we invented the resolution that our public read to us this evening for further review. There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you take someone I left?
Anyway, it's a pretty obvious. And show what you're saying.
Then she, uh, read that. Baron, real estate industry.
All right. Thank you all.
Long break.
It was a long break. It was so much, the temperature was so much better out in the hall. Okay, eh, uh, let's, let's get, let's get restarted here at, um. Thirty-one minutes past eight, um, so we're gonna move on to a discussion regarding our process for contingency fund asks. Funding asks, and I wanted to bring this up, because I know earlier. This year, we had talked about splitting out requests for, um. Monies from the city that come out of our operating contingency. Money goes to a lot of different things, but amongst, amongst the various things that operating contingency goes towards, we tend to pay out. Community requests for funding, um, and so I looked back and, and then I know. You know, the, the high school came and asked for money for their musical, and we were like, oh wait, but it's. It's not July second, and then the dark. Dice, the dark sky student salary can and ski join, and so it seemed like that we were sort of going off the rails. But I went back and looked, um, over the last kind of year of requests to us. And there's an, there's an assortment of these small sort of asks. Usually every year, the high school musical requests a thousand dollars. There's these sort of un. Like not, not recurrent, but sort of just random small asks like the funding for. Um, the young man from C M C, you know, for taking light quality or spec quality meter readings. Um, ski join had asked twice. Or was it three times or annually for money to help with the video. Um, production of ski touring, but also Duffy indicated this year that they wouldn't be doing that anymore, so. That may have been a random thing that, that comes to an end. We had the rodeo people come in and didn't really actually make an ask. Um, eh, 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 but then outside of those small things, like those things that. Really add up to like less than ten thousand dollars annually, especially in the last year or so. We've had a number of larger community organizations come and ask for. A significant amount, so St. George's came last year and asked for gap funding for a shortage that they were experiencing for thirty thousand. Um, we had, uh, we routinely every year give money to Lake County Community Fund to distribute through their grant program. We had the early, uh, childhood care and education fund come last year and ask for fifty thousand dollars. And then this year, we've seen the advocates come to ask for, to be a line item on the ballot. We gave the, the regional housing authority three hundred thousand last year, so these are all just sort of. You know, really large asks from, from more, from larger groups than like the high school students, you know, or. Or, or a single person request, and so I think what I would like to propose is, I, I like. And I understand the need for flexibility for some of these small asks, like I could ask. Pr- Principal Carol to come in and ask in January, um, for funding for the high school musical, understanding that you wouldn't really need it until May. Um, but I think, I, I think some of those things, especially the ones that are hard to see coming, like the, the student salary. Um, that, that we maintains a, a flexibility for smaller asks to just take them on an. At, you know, as they appear. Way and ask. Some of the larger, you know, like, so if, say, advocates comes in, be like, hey, you know, like big asks need to happen. These other two times years, because the meaning contingency fund that we have, I mean, for me, that's where the real prioritization comes in. Then give St. George's several thousand dollars, are we gonna, are you know, over the advocates ask? Are we gonna give the regional housing authority? Hundreds of thousands of dollars over the advocates ask, like, I think those are more of the. The, the weight, the weighing that we have to do over, you know, prioritizing and choosing. And I don't think we're gonna sit there and be like, well, musical.
Do you have a threshold in mind?
Yeah, you know, so we typically in the past for our budget, we, we often will assign things to the contingency fund ahead of time. So the money that goes to Lake County Community Fund, um, the, you know. Hang on, I have our. Not it. I have a budget in the other room, but there's some of these line items that, they're not really line items, but they're sort of earmarked and they're large quantities. And those kind of get filled in ahead of time, and that, that gets, that ends up being decided during budget season. And then we usually end up with about twenty thousand dollars that's sort of left in the contingency fund. That's just for kind of walk-in asks. When these other larger groups came in last year and, and asked, a lot of that did not, you know, like, it, it goes way over what the contingency fund. Really has outlined, like twenty thousand dollars for community asks, you know, like every big request we've received this year has far exceeded that.
So twenty thousand dollars to extra budget is about sixteen hundred dollars.
You know, so.
What's the largest ask of these?
Of the minimum.
Yeah, the, the mini asks.
Largest of the many asks would have been ski join, which is six thousand. And I understand that that's not going to.
Would have been a third of the. Contingency over.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if.
Well, but ski joining is every year, so wouldn't that mean, it has been traditionally. Every year recently, so wouldn't that really kind of become a line item anyway?
Well.
Potentially.
Maybe a, a, a pre-assigned destination in the operating contingency, because ski join is city, so it wouldn't really make it a line.
Because city, it's gonna happen every year, we know there's gonna be asked every year, wouldn't that?
Yeah.
So, ou- outside of that, if, if ski join was an outlier. For six thousand dollars.
Not that I could discover, like in the last year, there were, after that, there was a J P Housing Trust, we gave ten thousand dollars. To, I'm trying to remember what that was for, do you?
Yeah, I, I could speak more specific to what it was for. Uh, uh, just transparency, I am on the J P House trust board, um, and I was. Basically, the ask was for ten thousand dollars for operating the current and existing, um, education program. That they, and they can make for home by readiness. Um, so while everyone's at program and the funds that works from both the city and the county. Were directly for that program since they were offering that service in our community. And they don't require those people who go through that program to, um, purchase only J P House Trust. It is a publicly available. Service that they provide.
Could that ask have been postponed to budget season?
Not for that. Um, I think there was internal fiscal year, um, I was actually working or on the board at the time. My understanding was there's fiscal year, uh. Eh, requirements that they, that they had in place, so it wouldn't have aligned their budget, however. Uh, going forward, I think would be a missed.
To do that, or would it have been something that, you know, depending on if we shift our, like, twice a year? You know, like, it might be silly to. I think like right now, if we talk about like January, February, July, and then any other large asks, you know, that we look at. During budget season in October, November, and see if we can assign to kind of a, you know, an earmark of the larger. Right in contingency, like we've done for Lake County Community Fund for the last long time.
So would it be possible to just let anybody know that it was coming for budget ask, and over a certain threshold, this has to happen these two times a year?
Yeah, I, and I think that, that I think would be. I think that would be reasonable, just, just kind of looking at what's happened this year and feeling like, yeah, we set these dates and then we totally ignored them.
The downside of that is if we set a threshold of twenty-five hundred dollars, then all of a sudden every ask is twenty-five hundred dollars, and they only really needed eight hundred dollars.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's an interesting question, I think we can always. We, yeah, I mean, we can always ask for justification of what, you know, like, why?
Right.
Do you need this? You know, I, I mean, that, the high school musical is always just sort of like ask for a thousand, for example, and they've been very forthcoming, like, here's what we spent it.
And set the threshold then at a thousand dollars, so for a thousand dollar ask, it has to come up during one of these two budget sessions?
I would, I would set it a little higher than that, just because of some of the stuff that's come across, like the, the dark sky student salary, which is one point five. Thousand, you know.
Which you know.
Uh, two thousand? Councilor Thomas.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we should, you know, set out some guidelines or parameters on what sorts of groups or organizations we will fund. I can imagine a scenario when a group would come before us. That might, might, might not make sense for us to fund, and maybe even have some simple format. That somebody fills out to make the request, I'm not saying it would be a formal grant application. But just some consistent information that we get between groups, so it's easier to make a decision.
That's a, that's an, that's a really good idea, an interesting idea.
It would help, it would help on that area. So everybody's asked this, what are they?
Exactly.
Do you, um. Do you wanna produce a proposed form?
Been a number of discussions about this, uh, in the. Out of this least discussion group, and. Uh, I saved you from reading the whole string of discussions, but in there, many communities are viewing what we are proposing doing. I think this is a little more sophisticated than below dollar asks. But I, I'm pretty sure in some, some of those emails I can find some samples from other cities.
Yeah, uh, I, I would appreciate that, Lori.
Am I overburdening it by asking Rebecca potentially what some of those questions are? I mean, the first of all to me is. E- exactly what audience is this benefit, in other words, I really want to make sure that it's city sent.
Yeah, and I think if, I don't know what Lori is, if, 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 if those types of. Questionnaires or decision trees exist, we should, we should look at what other, what other municipalities are doing.
One question would be what other funding are they seeking?
One, what other funding are they thinking, yeah, because I don't wanna put us in a position where, like last year, I mean, we had sales tax that was crazy. We had a lot of, we had, we, we just had like our, our revenue, um, or our general fund was just getting really loaded. Oh, let's just reflect. But, but also, you know, we had these, these, these groups in our community that are so foundational to. Providing services in our community and supporting our community that were in crisis, and it, it was really great. To be able to, you know, meet their requests, I know they were, you know, some of them were going to the county too, so to participate as. You know, as, as a government group in supporting, um, some of these critical. Services for, for our community, um, obviously, we can't do that every single year, so. But I like that idea, Lori, if you would, i- if you could just pull, or even just like. Remind me and I can look, or send me to the discussion chat and I can, I can help out with this, um.
Yeah, I just remember where.
And then, and then what I would propose is if we come up with such a form, then we'll run it by you guys at the next, or, you know, whenever we get it ready. The next count, the, the next available council meeting, um. And maybe move forward with, uh. With, with a, with a better informed contingency funding ask. Procedure, given what we have gathered so far this year. Questions, comments?
So do we wanna? Just put this on our future agenda, so we don't lose track of it?
Yeah, if you would put it on the agenda setting calendar, then we can, we can move it. As able, and that's an easy way for me to remember, to look into it too.
Like maybe a month up?
Yep.
Just to reiterate, potentially asks under two thousand dollars can come up. To council at any time, asks over two thousand dollars have to happen. At two designated times per year, and then we would have some type of a form on that that would. Direct that ask, and then inform that.
Yeah, really all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, every single one, yeah, okay.
So. I can see, I mean, if it's a, would have to be a different form for the larger. Cause a question like, what are the other funding spaces for something like that?
Well, like, and a larger ask is required some type of a presentation and supporting that, and a smaller ask is really just a.
Right.
Here's what we want, here's who the benefits, here's who else is supporting us, here's what we.
I, I don't see why there's any reason that smaller requests can't provide that information either, like, I, I happen to know offhand a lot of the other. Groups and people who, who fund, say, the high school musical, um, you know, the student salary was easy, that was just a fifty-fifty split.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I wonder if the community fund doesn't already have this questionnaire place.
Well, they, what they have is a very, a very detailed grant application process, right, and I don't think we wanted to.
No, that's true, I was just wondering if maybe they didn't have some type of vetting document that we could style up of.
I think the, the community fund has, just hasn't. Has something that's too detailed for what we're envisioning. Okay, sorry, I'm making a couple notes here.
Okay, who am I sending this to? I found one.
Do you? For sure. Edors, do you wanna copy also? Okay, cool, okay. Uh, Acting Chief Friar has been waiting so very patiently after a day of training. I would like to move on to department reports from the police department and the animal shelter.
Hey, can anyone hear me?
We can hear you, thank you, sir.
Trying to get the video to work, but doesn't wanna. Yeah, sorry, the video will not pull up, so.
We have our packet.
There we go. Alright, so for the police department, in the last month, uh, we hired a new officer, Aaron White, who's currently in field training. We will likely be sending two recruits to an academy, uh, to get certified and then start working as police officers. That'll probably happen in, I believe, September is when the next C M C academy starts. Uh, received a thirty-six hundred dollar grant from the state to fund one of those academy slots. Uh, received a forty-six hundred dollar grant for the state, from the state for training equipment and ammo. Uh, this grant usually funds the majority of our, uh, training expenditures each year. Um, parking tickets are up, a citizen actually called today to compliment C S O Natalie Lopez on, uh, seeing her issuing a bunch of parking tickets. Other than that, uh, looking forward to seeing the recruiters from K R W to, uh, give us their chief recommendations, so we can, uh, get a permanent chief in.
Chief Friar, what, with the, the, the candidates. Chief Brier, what, with the, the, the candidates lined up for post-training in September, um, is there, have, have we attached a, a required period of employment? Or, or pay the city back for the cost of post-certification to those agreements?
We are going to. We have not issued them formal, uh, formal offers while we work out the particulars of, uh, what the contract will be.
Yeah.
But that is our intent.
Yeah, I think, uh, we definitely in the last world war interview informed that candidate that that was one of the conditions, would be one of the conditions of the offer. Think we may have mentioned it the other candidate, but we had a commitment that I think our prior city attorney draft before us, uh, for a two-year commitment is the maximum that we can ask for. So we will probably just have, um, our current state attorneys office to take a look at that, make sure they're good with it. But it's, it's good to go. There's not really much else we need to do.
Do, um, has the police chief posting closed now with?
It has, uh, it has, and we have the, um, I just got it thinking yesterday because it closed, man, I don't know if it began, but it closed right. And so we do have the list of candidates, I have the mainards and sales taxes.
Yep.
Uh, so, uh, I've got a chance to look at it, and then we'll be working with our human resources director and, uh, K R W. And I can chief prior to go over the list and identify who, uh, who they recommend and what the criteria are, and then figuring out, you know, obviously, what the next steps are, the, uh, what their recommendations are on interviews, interview panel. We do have this.
Okay.
This is for you. I, I'm a little disappointed at first glance, Gina, it doesn't appear that we have any, you know, candidates. It is what it is.
Guys can be great too.
It's just that, the, the real reason I say this is, uh, there are, it is, I, I, this is there are a lot of them in law enforcement, and it is harder to keep them in law enforcement, I think, just as a question.
Yeah.
Uh, but it, and it would be, it would be nice to interview them. To interview, I, I was, I was hoping that we would get at least one thing.
Is this a typo on the first page of the report? Um, does money received for the month under twenty-five dollars from two parking tickets? Or is that just what's been admitted?
Uh, that would be what's been brought in so far. So I don't know if it's from the parking tickets issued this month or previous ones. I would have to get with Perla on that and see.
And I have talked to the administration department and the police department, number of times, the frustration they express with parking tickets is that sometimes they're out of state and it was still there.
Uh, Dan, a couple of months ago, you were going to initiate a training plan with our community service officers. Can you give us an update on how that's proceeding?
Uh, right now, as far as training, we've identified the needs for uh, getting them out there more. We're working on that. Uh, they have been out there far more in the public, getting out, getting tickets out. Um, some of it, uh, some of the training is, uh, we've been talking to other agencies to find out what they're doing with training. And one of the problems is in this state, there is no specified training regimen for community service officers. So some of this is a piecemeal process of finding what training is best for the CSOs, um, beyond the basics of what we do of, of teaching them, uh, how to issue tickets, um. I know we're trying to get them more involved in code enforcement, but that's going to entail, that's going to entail sending them, depending on the code enforcement. Uh, it's going to tend probably sending them, so, sending them to some training in order to understand the code enforcement process for what they're enforcing.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Chief Brier?
Chief, I have a question for you. How are, I, I remember discussion about the no parking signs in town, and people can't put up no parking signs on public parking. How is that handled?
Well, I, I'm an answer for, I don't know, because I can't remember if I put Chief Brown on the stand, no, uh, Chief Javas said last year. And, uh, I looked up the code program. And I can't remember if it was in our code or it was in the model term, it's actually in the model term. That says, es- essentially, you can't pick up fake traffic, uh, fake, uh, municipal signs. And so that's essentially what it is. And so what we, what we analyzed was, you know, if they're on a piece of private property, we're not going to enter someone's property and take this, yeah, so if it's on their text or something like that, we're not going to settle in a private property to this. We're not going to force it. Uh, i- i- if it's there, what we, what we did previously, what Chief Javas did is you can contact the property and you should say two things. Here's the code section, you can't do this, you can't pick up a fake no parking signs, you're not the minister, you don't have authority to do this. And so he had the code section, he would inform that, and second of all, we're not going to force it, so. You know, it's on your private property, so someone puts it in their window, or it's, now, if they put it on the street, we take those. That's, that's what Chief Javas did last year, but, but if it's on their property, we're not going to go under there. But that's how we've handled it in the past. Chief Brier, do you have anything, uh, I know you, you've been here much longer and I've worked, it's mostly when we sit around these days, and it's the usual people and you put the signs away and they put them back out.
Yeah, this is, this has been an ongoing problem, um, and I, no matter, you know, I've, no matter where I've lived, uh, this seems to be an issue that people believe that the street in front of their house is theirs, um. That nothing could be further from the truth. Those streets are funded by taxpayer dollars. Those streets are everybody's. Does that sometimes conflict with common courtesy? Perhaps, but we're, unfortunately, we can't enforce common courtesy. We have to enforce the law. Past, past things that were done in this city, like letting people pay a yearly fee to have no, to have parking spots put in front of their, their houses, I mean, that, that just can't be done. The only thing that can be done is if you take a look at, like, say, Denver and specifically, is you can instate a block-by-block parking, a resident parking-only system, but even then, you can't have it be for one person has their car in front of their house. It has to be a block-by-block case.
Yeah.
Other questions for Chief Brier?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Yeah, sorry, I was just sorry I couldn't be there. I just unfortunately had other commitments with, uh, the job.
No, I, I appreciate the time you've taken to come to us online.
Right, thank you.
Let's move on to animal shelter and welcome Caitlin Kuzco back. So glad to have you back.
Hello. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
My video also seems to be taking a minute. There we go. Oh, sorry about the poor lighting. Um, so today was my first day back. Uh, we have had a new hire at the animal shelter, and we had our PACPA inspection along with other animal organizations in the area today, so all of our paperwork passed with flying colors, all of our programs are good to go. Um, I need to submit our mowing schedule for the dog yard, um, to show that it's going to be on a schedule, um. And we have to get some FRPs panels put up. Our current dog kennels um, are outdated, and so they want to have a solid wall between the dogs. Ours currently are half-wall, half metal linking above, um, and so that no longer meets code. But that's about it.
And I, I understand that was a surprise PACPA inspection.
Yes, they are a surprise once a year, and then, of course, if there are, um, valid complaints that are submitted, then they will follow up with additional inspections if there are complaints.
So, so welcome back to a surprise inspection of your
And actually, I don't know how stressful it is, because it, it, you know, sometimes it just sounds like a friend, but this, it isn't, is not always been the history. Prior to Miss Kuzco, the, the animal shelter passed these surprise inspections. And so it really has been a testament to her management and turning the animal shelter around, um, that we, we have consistently passed these inspections, consistently passed these inspections. There's always stuff that we can improve and work on, uh, but this is the biggie, this is the big inspection that we get, and uh, I'm sorry that this happened on your first day back, but congratulations, uh, and it's really, it was their her leadership and her, her staff, because her staff carried, you know, carried a lot of the load while she was down, and, uh, it's just, it's a good thing.
Thank you, Lori. Um, and the only other update I can think of at this time, other than getting you guys numbers and statistics from when I was gone. Um, we did have Brenda attend the Animal Welfare Association Conference in April. Um, she was going to complete the two-day training and the testing for the Animal Control Officer um, education and testing. Unfortunately, she got pretty ill and had to leave, but they are allowing her to retest at the end of August, so she wasn't able to test, so it's not really a retest, but um, she should be testing the end of August for her, um, animal control certification.
And, and there's, there's, there isn't a, 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 one type of certification for animal control, uh, we were reviewing this today. We, we want her to self-train or self, you know, self-study, take this test in August. There's also a three module, three module course that she's doing right now? Two, so there's also two modules that she's doing that is also part of her, that she will, she also gets a certificate from that program too, right?
I'm sorry, it's breaking up just a little bit.
Which, but will she get a certificate from that, a two module training for her as well?
She will, yes. So it's kind of as Dan was saying, there's a lot of ways to get there. There's no one solid way, but we want to make sure that we have the training and education component, um, so she will have that through the NACA as well as their certification of the course completion, and then the state test, which is, um, the end of August.
Great. Questions, uh, for Miss Kuzco? Note, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, we're going to move on to our only action item, which is really kind of a non-action item. Um, this is regarding a certificate of appropriateness, appropriateness for two oh two S eight, ADU. Um, this agenda item was, was not completely noticed through our normal channels, and so we actually cannot uh, have a public hearing on it tonight. Um, so we are going to reschedule to the July sixteenth city council meeting to, um, have a public hearing on, on this particular certificate of appropriateness. Okay. Well done, team. Good action item. Let's move on to, uh, public comments. Yes.
Last person standing.
I, upright and breathing, like, this is great.
Um, I started at six thirteen, that's the street, and maybe I should have just added it to the the comment to the previous discussion regarding CSX, but I do want to thank the council, uh, for your discussion, and you feel like, um, uh, as a purger, uh, our concerns have been heard, and I really appreciate that, um. I appreciate the comments and the questions and, and learning that you will go or engage, might, will likely engage with someone to do some further investigation and outreach, uh, that sounds great. And to whatever level of the county, um, might, uh, participate or, or inform some of those questions for some holistic, uh, feedback from the community, um, we agree. Um, I also, as a purger, is trying to do the best to provide the basic services well, and uh, I appreciate the, the comments about, uh, the curiosity of, of going beyond, you know, rec-specific thing, um, and as a city resident, I especially appreciate that. So, I just want to thank you all. Appreciate it.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sticking it out this long-term.
But we stuck it on one.
I, you know, yes.
I didn't, I did not realize that the county what was it, it was supposed to be like that, you know, the county is not, but two municipalities as far as the two years, so
Yeah.
that seems, uh, like a relief to give some opportunity.
Right.
Should, you know, whatever the result.
Can we maximize our various and sundry funding streams? Okay, thank you so much. Yes. Uh, other public comments? Wow, really? Hey. I just don't know what to think.
Feel break.
Yeah. They kind of bookend our meetings. I mean, I love it.
Well, well, sometimes you look at weariness when you ask me that question.
Not sometimes.
Um, the newspapers used to be a really good resource. Here's an article of yesterday's paper about Dylan decide, he's ever been, did major develop, voters to decide major development. And then there was another article in here about Kent Ridge. Officials want an exception for work, which housing is held from a party. Um, I'd like to look at this article really quickly, but in the past, I talked about how, uh, Democrats in Congress, they, uh, measured whatever about getting corporations out of housing. So, we can keep down. So corporations have uh, in the United States, uh, I think it was Charlotte, Illinois, there by a sudden, they own a critical amount of housing. And, and, and so this is becoming burdensome on the nation. Um, in, in, let alone we have corporations that have lots of housing. I, I noticed, uh, one of the developers in town across the street, they own the house, and they have it underneath an LLC. But the LLC is specific to that building. They own lots of buildings in town. So maybe they have a different LLC for each of these buildings, then transparency becomes an issue, um, or lack of it. Um, and there's other things you talked about before, but quickly, uh, it said mechanism was created in nineteen ninety-seven, allowing the town to treat workforce housing developments differently than other housing developments, which is creating questions around what the town's true capacity is. And then beginning eleven, two thousand eleven ratio created by recognition, council required that the town give one development right, where they're able to bring and build a single unit of density for every four units of workable housing, workforce housing. Then a couple of years later, the ratio changes one to two. The recognition council then served in two thousand twenty votes to change that to one to one ratio. But these ideas that keep coming up in the paper, they're, I think they're really doing good coverage on these regional things that, you know, recognition, so on and so forth, and, um, uh, so I, I think reading the papers gives you, for these things. Okay, thank you, and hopefully we can collate, and we could get some kind of a momentum going that we incorporate some of these in our, thank you kindly.
Thank you very much. Other public comment, we just really don't have the public. All right, so I'm going to move on to the mayor's report. Um, I have a, a number of things just to talk about. One of, one of them is I, at our last meeting, um, I think it was, uh, Stuart Frankhome, Rebecca Thomas, Tammy Tabor, and John McMurtry had talked to History Colorado, uh, who's doing the restoration of Baby Doe Tabor's wedding dress, and it turns out that as fruit from those discussions, um, that History Colorado is going to bring the dress here on September sixth, like Rebecca mentioned. My question to you is, um, that, that I'm timing my My question to you is, um, that, that I'm timing my. Is that, um, particular effort to renovate the dress is accepting donations? Um, I have a, a small amount of money that I can just like. Use like, you know, got a city flower box, stuff like that. So I think it's things that are under five hundred dollars. But in, in, in effort to, uh, it just get some county or some county, oh my God, I need to go back. A city council buy-in, is there an interest, uh, uh, among city council to donate any money to that restoration fund?
They have committed to bringing the dress up and displaying it at the. The Healy House Museum for some.
Yeah. Is it, I think it's just that one day, right?
That's my understanding. I'm not really sure, but yeah, probably the Healy House. There was some talk about trying to do the Tabor Opera House. But I think the Healy House is more straightforward for the, um, Colorado history.
Could we at least donate enough money to pay for the transport of the dress and back something like three hundred dollars?
What do you guys think?
I like that idea.
A little bit of buy-in for us and a little bit of thank you for including Leadville.
Yeah. I like that idea. Uh, I will, I'll proceed with that plan, um. If, if unless there's any strong objections.
Thank you.
Great. Um, uh, so. The, the city received a mini grant to help offset the cost of our strategic plan. Um, this is a matching grant, um, so we receive, we will receive, it's because it's reimbursement grant. We will receive about forty-seven hundred dollars, cuz that's half of the cost of. The consultant fee, renting freight for a town hall and, uh, engaging an interpreter for that particular town hall. Um, so I just signed the papers for that today. Um, so at the conclusion of our strategic plan funding, I'll submit the report and we'll get some money back. So that's my goodness. City administrator and I, uh, attended the CML annual conference, uh, in Loveland, we're way too hot. And it was amazing. It was exhausting. I have gone to a lot of medical conferences where the point is to go. To the, the lectures that they have and you learn from those and then maybe say hi to some old friends and you don't really do anything outside of that. We, uh, the meat of this conference, as I learned, because I had a very good mentor. Um, is, is everything that happens in between. And so literally by the end of the first day. We had a potential new, um. Uh, short-term rental platform to consider. We made a contact for, uh, you know, a group about. Uh, redoing the, uh, lighting down our, our main street. Um, I. Made a couple of new friends. I also learned that there's some really. Very interesting people in city government. At different levels, um, so that it was instructional and it was really meaningful to, like, I went to the. To the Colorado Municipal League, the annual business meeting, and they did roll call and they're sitting in this room. With a single representative from, from different municipalities all over the state. And so having everybody, you know, like, Palisade here, you know, Leadville here, Berthet here, you know, and it was, uh, it felt really moving, like, holy cow. This is really awesome, you know, to be part of this, um, this whole process and this group that. Helps inform municipalities about state legislation, provides trainings, provides support. Uh, I'm just really so. I, I've gained a, a deep appreciation, A, for the role that, that CML plays. Um, and also I learned how to conference. And also I learned, you gotta, you gotta rest up before those things, man. Holy cow. Um, I did notice as I was there, there were a lot of, there was a variety of people from different municipalities. So I sat down for lunch with most of the city council from U-Ray. Um, so there's no reason, uh, you know, out, outside of funding that if you all were interested. Um, when it comes around next year, I actually think it's in Breckenridge, so it'll be a little more convenient. Um, but it. If any of you are interested in going, I think the cost was like two hundred and thirty bucks and it was great. And I think, you know, for anybody who wants to learn a little bit more, make some more connections, um, I highly recommend it. Um, as part of that CML conference, the, um. The, the, the board president, who is a councilwoman from Burton. Pro, gave her kind of her project. So for the last several years, the board president, whoever is that year. Has a particular project that they work on and her project has been civility. So we get the CML magazines. You may have seen it this last month. It says civility across the front. Um, I really recommend reading that. If you go to the, the CML site, there's actually a civility pledge that she's created. And I think it would be interesting for us to, like, maybe publicly take that pledge. Especially in this day and age with, uh, you know, a, a, a very. Fall election coming up with our efforts to improve our relationship with the county. Um, I think it might be a very good starting place for all of us to, to reflect on. And if y'all are interested after reading it. Um, to actually maybe just do a pledge some night. So I'm gonna bring that back to you. But if you've got your CML magazine, please read it. Sometimes they're really kind of dry, but that one's really good. Um, and then finally, I'm just gonna brag on my little sister. My little sister is a lawyer and she is a professor at, in, of law at Seattle University. And she runs a project, um, called the Homeless Rights Advocacy Project. Um, they do a lot of work trying to protect the rights of unhoused people in different municipalities. And one of her papers was cited in Justice Sonia Sotomayor's dissent on the Oregon Grant's pass. Uh, decision recently coming out of Springfield. So she even ha, she even got, there's a Guardian article that. That is interviews my sister. So anyway. Proud of her. It's crazy. Okay, that's all that I've got. Council reports.
It's like my, it's only right today.
It's ours to think about it, isn't it?
Yeah, nothing else, right? Um. So, a couple of things. One, sales tax task force went very well, in my personal opinion. I think it's a testament to our ability as a city to be open and hear our community. And put genuine effort into, um, working with them to come up with proper solutions. So, thank you, city council, for giving us the opportunity to take that on. And I hope that we take this, um, and model and run with it really for any future things. Despite the scheduling. Additionally, I wanted to give you a, um, report. Uh, the Associated Press came up to Lake County to interview. Some community members, including myself, about, um, the, uh, CJ Kmail. Uh, I did speak, I made sure to say that though I am the council member, you did reach out to me as a council member. I'm not speaking for city council. But, um, I did also refer to our, uh, stance on it and use official stance as a core extent of my response. So, you know, we're looking forward to potentially having that go come out at some point in the future. Um, and lastly, um. Uh, housing wise, original authority wise, uh, we're moving forward with discussion to go on. Uh, finalizing the guidelines for hopefully next meeting. I, and we ended up coming up with the. We didn't end up coming up with a session. So next meeting, next meeting should be the. Day that we vote for the guidelines that those will be official hopefully by then. Um, so we'll be able to move on to more fruitful discussions after that. And go forward to see what else original housing vertical handle, which also will hopefully open the door of, for discussion. As to what those funds will be used for, um, the three hundred thousand dollars funds that were allocated to them. So hopefully that discussion starts soon after that meeting. Um, which I believe is. On my calendar, um, I think, yeah, the seventeenth, Wednesday, five thirty, um, location to be decided later. Uh, so look forward to that. Hopefully we'll get a good idea of, um, where those funds will go. Just for, uh, context, those funds were originally for, um, I think some type of staff. Um, that shifted plans because it's not safe to hire someone off of non-recurring funds. And if I had recurring funds to hire the staff, I have actually no idea where Jackie is in that process. But it doesn't mean, especially because the development was actually retaken by the county, it does mean that. Um, the original housing authority, the three hundred thousand dollars that were originally earmarked for one thing. May or may not actually come to fruition. So those discussions are very necessary to be had and, um, may or may not, well, counsel.
Thank you. Other council reports. Yes, sir.
Um, appreciate Steve bringing up workforce housing and. Um, I think when you, when you're reading or listening to reports on these various. Housing strategies, it's really important to keep in mind that these are categories and as categories are very, very sloppy. And as we've already addressed, um, uh, at least once in council. The, the category affordable housing, for example, allows a lot of things that aren't actually affordable. Workforce housing in particular isn't a bad thing, but when it's corporations. Um, acquiring housing for their own workforce, that's where it gets to really disrupt the market. Because it means that, um, it creates a potential for a lot of empty units. Uh, units that are just being held for potential workers as Clemex, you know, like we'll be doing. And is doing at the bank building and will be doing at the Silver King. Um, so. The, the one category that I think is the one to really tune into and the one I think we should be discussing more in all these conversations is low income. Um, anything, when, anytime you're talking about, you know, a hundred, a hundred twenty percent of A and M, that is the median. We're talking about the median and above. We need to be talking about well below the median or, or, you know, working class citizens. Um, related to that, I was gonna bring this up before you mentioned your sister. Um, I encourage everybody to read, uh, Justice Sotomayor's dissent to the Grant's past decision. The Grant's past decision should put a chill through everybody's spine about essentially criminalizing homelessness. And Sotomayor's dissent is brilliant and not that long. It's really worth a read. And I didn't know that was your sister that was cited in that.
Right.
Very quickly, if I can.
Yes, sir.
Um, I was taking a client through downtown this week. We were admiring and bragging about all of the restorations, Tabor Opera House, the Payless. Uh, Baywood Bureau Home, the newspaper, all of the restorations happened over the last couple of years here in Leadville. And we barked to go have lunch and kind of pies. And I took a look at one property on Harrison Avenue, right in the middle of all this, that is absolutely blinding. Uh, spray paint all over the building, huge eight foot, no parking signs. It's a real nice one. So I reached out to planning zoning. We do not have a signage ordinance that addresses signage as far as spray painting signs. What we do have is city government, it addresses aesthetic nuisance. I'd like to direct. City administrator or whoever would be responsible for this to approach the business owner. It's three seventeen Harrison Avenue, right on the corner. It's like, you know, drinking lot. To see if there's anything that we could do, we assist with paint job, could we? Could we suggest appropriate signage? Is there something we could do to? At least to make the business owner aware that. It's an issue that ought to be addressed.
Yeah, there's something that's come up before. This is the procedural ban. One city councilor can't direct the city administrator to do anything. But I, I think I understand your, your request in it and we'll look into it. Um. I mean, I think, yeah, I think we've had this issue before with, with properties and. Is lacking in, in a lot of ways.
Yeah, there's no way to address a design show, but there is something very specific called aesthetic nuisance. And that particular building and the D-hive across the street would fall into that similar category.
Uh, which could at least open a dialogue with this.
The D-hive is, is about to be renovated.
What?
The D-hive is like. Oh, no, I understand that. It's, it's been about to be renovated now for the past four years. And that, and that's fine. It's just, I mean, if nothing else, maybe we could get the pictures hung back up in the window that show other historic besides. Cuz there was an effort made at that. My one specific complaint right now is. Is we've done such a phenomenal job on Harrison Avenue that this one is starting to stand out like a real. Um, and it would just be nice to find a way to start a dialogue. Certainly not trying to direct you personally, I'd just like your direction as to who speaks.
Well, I mean, I, I, I think we probably need to figure out. Planning perspective, usually with, with property, you're like, that the first thing we, we do is.
I appreciate you, uh, introducing me to the term aesthetic nuisance.
That came directly from Kate. I was trying to get that addressed and he said to the council, because there's no. There's no planning reason to address it. It's really a.
But that, but aesthetic nuisance is. I think that might be a starting point. Laura, I'm happy to look into it.
It's been that way for a very long time. It's not a hardship or a dire situation. It's just a, a lack of interest, uh, or, or a lack of.
And I, and I think it would be easier, like, if we had some funds in Laura to be, you know, like, hey, considered. Buying for something you could use for paint. I mean, it is an awkward situation cuz we don't. We don't really. Like, we don't, and, and maybe it's good we don't have teeth in the code, but it's an opportunity to, to make a contact and. You know, and see what the situation is, you know?
Just exactly. It's just something that would be a. It can be quite beneficial and it doesn't.
Well, I actually know Todd, um, so I'm happy to talk to him too. Yes, Steve.
On this particular issue about studying, um, I was at a meeting here. Several decades ago, I possibly made it was. Um, and there was American State talking, uh, about what we couldn't, couldn't do. And he's, I, I, I don't remember his title and who was there, but it was a meeting of, for city council. And he said, you cannot rule on aesthetics. Um, this was a, a, a major point, my objection to Bud Elliott's, um. Assignment, in, in our code, there's something about the police officer, uh, determining whether it fits the. And the word's not aesthetics there, but it's the lead bill over. I forget what it is exactly. All these things are somewhat nebulous and judgmental. I think someone with money can do it every day, but we'll end up bullying people without money. So in this particular case, with the, um, parking thing there. Uh, once or twice, I've told people that they couldn't park there, that they just pull right in. And he needs that parking for his business. He just doesn't want to put barriers there. And the sign is ugly. But maybe there could be some way to dial it in, if it's all there.
Yeah, not intended to be punitive, just something where we can start the conversation. Because maybe he can't see it. I mean, maybe it's been that way so long that he has no idea. It really attracts from the Tabor Opera House across the street and you're trying to take a picture. Well, whatever.
Maybe a right sign there though would be get less attention from, he does have problem with wanting to park his trucks there and somebody, some visitors there.
And certainly no problem with that. I'm not trying to challenge parking, you know, it's just, yeah, every, every little thing we can do to. Make the city a nicer place during tourist season.
I, I'd like to call in, council member, Tony.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to give another quick update on the topic of rehabilitation. We're, we continue to make progress on the city hall. Uh, the grant application opens on October first for a general competitive grant, which would be worth two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We had the civil engineer on site, I think earlier this week, or maybe it was last Friday, to take a look at the, um. Areas surrounding the building and start to think about the foundation and what work needs to be done first. In conversations with the architect and the civil engineer, things are now a little bit in flux. They're suggesting that it might make more sense to apply for a smaller grant this fall. To do some additional civil engineering work and put together a more solid design before we apply for a. a general competitive grant. But they're still thinking about that, and they'll get back to um me and Joey with a firm firm suggestion. So we'll either be applying for the general competitive grant this fall, or if not that, more immediately a smaller grant to complete a survey and some civil engineering design work. So, more on that as it happens. Thanks.
That's super exciting. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Thomas, there was a question that came up in our agenda preparation meeting today. Is the architect uh one works on that? Is that not the architect you're working with?
Uh, Formworks. Yes, the, yes. Yep.
Is it, and is that Natalie or one of her?
Uh, Natalie and Jessica both are participating. Yep, they're the two partners of the firm.
Our planning director was like w- was going to be ecstatic if that's who you're using, because he's like, that's exactly who they need on this kind of
Okay, good. Yeah, that's who we've got.
Alright, great. Thank you so both so much for your work on this. Um, we're almost out of council members to report.
Uh, I was just gonna mention the uh community guidelines thousand thirty on the seventh and that was all I had.
Okay. At five thirty TBD location.
TBD.
Okay.
Looks likely so.
Mayor Pro Ten Part.
Uh, have we considered getting a bike rack in front of city hall?
We would let.
Have we considered getting a bike rack?
We
Do you have one? Really? Why did you put it there?
It's there.
Okay, wait, I wanna ask for another thing.
So, you get the streets department.
Yes, streets department.
They uh have had the bike rack for a little while. We missed the window last year before the ground was supposed to put it in. And so they uh did put it in. It looks like a beige black bicycle. It is just pretty good design. Um, so it is in the parking lot to go around, we find the um the bracket fence. It matches the bicycles that are in the bike rack across at the uh at the, thank you. Anyway, so yes.
Thank you.
What, you want anything else?
I have one other report. I used the visitor's center bathrooms for the first time, and they're so gorgeous.
Aren't they gorgeous?
Have you been in there? If you haven't, go in there. Yeah, gorgeous.
Yeah.
The art is beautiful.
Well, and the thing, yes, it's fantastic. That is, apart from the past home, did that artwork.
Yes.
And and that's the, the other time, I've been without a little bit of controversy. I think we're gonna be replacing the uh ceramic toilets in there with stainless steel, and for a very important reason, is the ceramic in public restaurants. Beautiful public restaurants, they're they're normally stainless steel, and I'm not sure why that happened well of us, but we might need to replace it with stainless steel, because one of the ceramic ones is cracked.
I hope it's beautiful stainless steel.
Uh, it'll be shiny.
Yeah, cracked porcelain has to be replaced. It's an absolute pad. It's a razor blade. So
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and so what ended up happening is that one was cracked, and it may have happened early on, but at any rate, it's we're gonna replace it, and then I I asked our streets department manager to maybe even look at replacing both of them uh at the same time, but yeah, well, I'm glad you had a good experience.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I say this, um, you know, I'm just gonna shout out to to Paula, who is the person who cleans those restaurants. Cleaning public restaurants is a fabulous job. And it is not a full-time job for her. And uh I was telling a situation to her where she really took initiative and just took care of something on a weekend where someone at the visitor's center mentioned something she'd be taking care of, and she just took care of it on the weekends.
Yeah, Paula.
And it was not a pleasant speech.
It was, it was not gonna be pleasant to ask anything. By the time we had gotten a report about it, Paul Paula, she's like, I'm already here for so it, and and I I talked to, uh, I think it was, and we were talking to Sharon. Said, you know, when people drive to Leadville, that's interesting, they're probably gonna do, yeah.
Also, thanks.
Yeah. They might, they might do that a little bit later than that. They're gonna have to go with the and so it's nice that our bathrooms are do you want, you could be new to it.
No, I just love it. I just celebrate.
So is the, is the, what is the future of those, given that that building is gonna be?
Well, they're not there anymore.
They're just there.
Well, you know, that's the interesting thing about how we we've done things. We get very clear that land belongs to the uh City Center Association. I think it's pretty mostly relatively clear that we own the building, but anyway, we ensure it. Um. Yeah, so I don't know, nothing is gonna change. I, we have a memorandum of understanding regarding what happens over the mayor's department, so we had a memorandum of understanding with uh the tourism panel, Main Street, the city, and I can't remember who else, but we maintain the parking lot. Main Street does flowers in the summer, and I can't remember, tourism panel, there were a handful of things they took care of. Really, they were the kind of property and notified us. Things, but mainly the management was the streets. And actually, just a shout out to our streets department. Didn't, uh, Paula was out, I think, for some little reason. Uh, we didn't necessarily remove some staff, so there's no make sure they were I did not know that.
It's a wide skill set.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
We are just, you know, when your firm's like they needed to be done, so I cleaned it myself.
Okay. Last call for comments.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Are are you moving on to public meetings planner, mayor? Or no?
We didn't, we did not have one in our packet.
I just I thought of the cover sheet. I just wanted to confirm just for our office's planning purposes and for election calendar purposes, whether the meeting the week of Labor Day will still be um on Tuesday, September third. Monday, the second is Labor Day. I just didn't know if there
I wouldn't, it's not a city holiday that Tuesday, so. Um.
Great, just wanted to
I don't think it would interfere.
Great.
Just a work session next week.
Work session next week?
And then
On the next.
Yeah. Um, thank you all very much for showing up early for the Laura today. The next Laura meeting is August first. I
Yeah.
Well alright, it is wait, wait, it is at nine thirty-six. I adjourned this. City Council, mayor, who won?
There's mostly again, I was, I was off by five.
Oh, he got this.
Nope. The last one, the last one was ninety-six.
Six.
Go. That's about going.
Oh.
Whichever is over.
I just think it was by
Which would be
They should have right, because for the change of this, the first time
You're alright. Okay.
I'll say, would you, can I be up to a snap from their snap horn?
Would you?